Hey. Let's begin. Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on March 26, 2025, at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Publics Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on March 21, 2025, has been posted to the municipal website. And what is that? It's wwwprincetonnj.org. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order 292 in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meeting Protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board of the municipal complex or at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you call a roll, please?
Ms. Chen? Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Ms. Dubkin?
Here.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have one resolution this evening. It's case 24-574, 251 Edgerstone, Block 8204, Lot 7. And you should have the resolution in your packets. And if there are any questions or comments, please bring them up now, or if someone would like to make a motion, please do so.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Who who's second there? Eve?
Coulson.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you call a roll, please, Claudia?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We have three applications this evening. The first one is case Z22-295, 13 Prospect Street, Block 45.01, Lot 2.01 in the E2B Zone. This we heard a long time ago. And it's back. So Derek, can you so well, first of all, Claudia is the applicant and they're counsel present?
Ryan is Ryan Kennedy is on 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 the meeting. Can you tell me who do you need over?
Good, going in alphabetically, I see two people from our applicants, Jim Hayes and Patrick Y, as well as our architect John Hassan and our engineer Sam Wally.
Can they raise their hands? Thank you.
Hey, something up on the screen.
Yeah, can we close that?
One second.
Sure.
Share something? Stop sharing.
Let's put it in. Good, thank you. Okay. Derek, can you summarize your memo for us, please?
Sure.
Derek, before you begin, let me swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
And I'll just note for the board, staff has reminded me this application is carried several times, so the applicant was not obligated to notice for tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Correct. I just want to share the screen a little bit. The applicant is back again. They were here previously on September 27, 2023. They have revised the plans. But they still maintain the construction of the building addition containing the elevator and the improved ADA accessibility, removing the existing shed and the reconstruction of the walkway to the west of the principal structure. So over here. They have also previously appeared with four parking spaces and the removal of a tree. They've scaled that down to two parking spaces and I'm not really going to go into it too much more because I think the applicant can bring more information to the board.
Derek, are you trying to share something because what I see is still just, there we go. Okay, that's gone now. Okay.
Okay.
So you see the screen now?
Yes.
So there there were allegedly two parking space or four parking spaces off of the driveway and now there's two. And there's going to be a further amendment to the plan, but I'm going to let Ryan Kennedy take take care of that. They still have a floor area ratio which increases from point 88 to point 89. It's an 180 square foot increase. The permitted FAR is 0.6%. There's a building coverage variance still, a maximum permitted is 30% and they're 30.68%. Percent, it's basically a 60 square foot increase. And then there's a building setback for the the, excuse me, the elevator. And then there's a projection into a side yard 17A, 377F. There's a slight patio that projects into the side yard. We do ask that the stormwater management manual be updated to include the telephone number, the party responsible for the maintenance and the applicant shall and draw install a trench drain to the northerly lot line for the width of the driveway to collect runoff from the driveway part of flowing over the public sidewalk. They should provide testimony as to the location of the trash recyclers, recycling storage, which I think will be done when Ryan talks about the revised driveway scenario, so. That's pretty much the memo. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to address them. And I'll stop sharing the screen.
Aaron, I don't think I asked. The notices are in order?
Yes, Steve. As I think I noted, the staff has reminded me this applicant this application has been carried a number of times. So the applicant was given this specific date. We did announce it, so no additional noticing was required.
Good, okay. Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
Mr. Chairman, members of board. Thank you so much, Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee for the applicant Tower Club of Princeton University here this evening. For those of you who are on the board at the time, you may remember, as Chairman mentioned, on late 2023, we came before the board after going to HPC with two separate sets of accessibility improvements for this historic Princeton University eating club. On one hand, literally the right hand on the right side of the project is an elevator tower to allow internal accessibility between the floors for users of the club, guests and 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 other people using the building. The second component was an attempt to figure out how to get a couple of parking spaces. Essentially, what I'll describe is in the front yard of the project. This is one of the few, if not the only, eating clubs that does not have parking behind it. And there was a proposal first, as Mr. Bridger said, for four spaces. We, there was a great debate and discussion about a very important, both to the community and the club tree in the front yard that would have potentially been impacted. We went back to the drawing board and and tried to come up with a design for a two space, you know, one ADA space and and possibly a second space. I'm here to tell you tonight that while we've done a lot of work to try to do that, the delay in getting the elevator online and moving forward with the issues that are still remain that will remind you of in putting that part of the project together have caused the applicant to look at this and say, let's let's go forward and get the ADA elevator tower put in and we may come back at a future date with another application to address the parking. But ultimately, we're here tonight to go through the project and just address the elevator. And for those of you who are here, we will go through the whole thing. But it's a piece that you may remember if you from quite a while ago from that from that first hearing. We've got possibly four people to speak tonight. We've got our engineer Sam Wally, our architect, who will mostly be pushing things here tonight, John Hassan, and then Patrick Young and Jim Hayes from the from the club itself, if we have any any questions. Apologies, but Chair, I see Mr. Bridger's hand is up. I'm happy to pause if there's any questions or I missed something.
Excuse me, Ryan, I forgot to mention that Elizabeth Kim is here and the HPC did provide a report on the revised design, so I just want that on the record. Sorry to interrupt you. Thank you.
Will the board like to hear from Ms. Kim before the application, the revised application is presented?
I think it's a good idea if we get a summary of her the HPC.
Elizabeth, we'll just swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So obviously, the HPC was not aware of this change, so I will really just review the memo that was presented in regards to the application, which is the same that your board has. As Ryan had said, HPC reviewed the revised design on November 18, 2024. It was indicated to the commission that the existing or the original elevator design was not changing. The material, the location, the dimensions, everything was to stay the same. With the new design, a portion of the existing retaining wall adjacent to the existing driveway needed to be demolished and sections rebuilt along the east side of the driveway. An existing fence on the top of the west elevation of the retaining wall and the existing planting in that vicinity would be required to be removed. However, with this design, they were not proposed to be transplanted elsewhere on the property. The new parking will continue to be in the front yard of the building of off the west side of the driveway as it was previously, but as Mr. Bridger stated, only two parking spaces would be provided, one which would be the ADA and another one which would service an electric vehicle. The site has been revised with that new parking layout and redesigned utility area and has been regraded to to direct ADA accessibility to the main entry walkway from the new parking lot. And as your board may recall, the previous design, the 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 ADA access had to go back down the driveway along the public sidewalk on Prospect Avenue and then back up the entrance. With this design, they did accommodate with regrading that there would be direct accessibility to the entrance walkway from the new parking lot. And the parking area also was repositioned to preserve the London Plain tree and the applicant ensured that it would be protected. In addition, the four other trees on the property were proposed to be retained with the new design. HPC with reservation was recommending to your board to approve this application with Baron's request. And really, the reservation continued. I mean, they acknowledged that they redesigned to accommodate that ADA walking from the parking lot to the elevator access. However, there were certain things that they had talked about in their original memo, which had to do with accessibility to the exterior spaces, accessibility, which was not really directed to be available with the elevator. So a lot of times they had to go outside, go along the walkway to the adjacent property and then go into the backyard. So those reservations still remain with them. However, they did support the application because of the revised parking. But with this change, I think the HPC would completely support this design. They never had any issues with the elevator being installed, and I think the removal of the parking in front of the building and the front lawn area was also a concern because it really impacted the streetscape of all the eating clubs, and this would be the only one that had parking in the front. So they would definitely support what the applicant is doing at this point. So I think the other items on here are kind of mute on their recommendations with the revised design that the applicant is coming into tonight. And if there's any questions, I'm available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any board members, any questions of Elizabeth? Okay, thank you again. Ryan, please continue.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Elizabeth, as well, for particularly, you know, for the summary and for for continuing to work with the applicant. We spent a, we did spend a lot of time and we really did try to make the overall larger project work and very appreciative of HPC, your volunteers and and staff working with us, and we may be back to try to figure it out in the future, but for now, just our thanks. We've got I'm going to likely just be two witnesses, but if we could swear all four of us in in case they're they're needed, I see John, our architect, has turned his camera on. Sam, if you, Patrick and Jim all could, I'd ask that they could be sworn in for for possible testimony tonight.
Sure, let's see. Mr. Wally and Mr. Hayes, you're muted, so and Mr. Young, so, okay, great. Gentlemen, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sam, we'll we'll start with you, and if it's all right, I'd like to share my screen and mark our one exhibit or slideshow this evening as I guess A1.
Okay, and Mr. Kennedy, are these PowerPoint slides and do you know how many there are?
There are PowerPoint slides. There are 22 of them, but I'll be honest, we're not going to get to all of them. A lot of them have the details of the of the part of the project that we're abandoning. So we'll we'll be clear which slides we're actually using. And because I do not expect we will get to number 22 by any by any stretch.
Okay.
You're going to put it up on the screen, please?
Apologies. There's an extra click there. Let's see if that if that did it. All right. Sam, if you could, before we start, give the board a brief introduction of your part of your involvement of the project and your credentials as an engineer here this evening from Dynamic.
Absolutely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from NJIT with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I'm currently employed as a project manager at Dynamic Engineering at the Chester office. I've been involved with this project for the better part of two years or so at this point. And I've appeared before multiple boards, including this board last time and late 2023, and my license is in good standing.
We'll accept you as an expert in your field.
Perfect, thank you. Chairman, Sam, if we could, I'll start stepping the board as a reminder through the, you know, the original idea of the project and where we are. So here, slide two, we've got a copy of the Princeton's zoning map. Is that blue arrow show the subject property on Prospect Avenue in the E2 zone in the former borough?
Correct, right. Property is located within the E2 zone. We're located at 13 Prospect Avenue and we're specifically designated as a block 49.01, lot 2.01 in the municipal tax maps.
Here, slide three.
So this is a bird's eye aerial map. Some surrounding uses. We're essentially surrounded by other clubs and Princeton University campus in the north is Prospect Avenue and Princeton University campus beyond. To the east, we have the Cannon Club. To the west, we have the Coffee Club and Washington Road beyond. To the south is the Terrace Club. Overall, the property in its entirety is about 0.53 acres. And the property is currently developed, as everyone knows, with the historical Tower Club of Princeton, paved driveway, sidewalks and a half court basketball court at the rear of the site. I think that generally covers the existing conditions for the aerial map if we want to continue moving forward.
Yep, so next slide four, we've got a front on view from the street showing the the existing club and the brick wall kind of in front of it. I guess the two arrows are meant to show generally where the two formerly two elements of the project would be the the left being the the parking element and the right being where the elevator tower will go?
Yep, that's correct.
All right, and we won't dwell much on this, but slide five, this was the original idea for the parking area that was presented in 2023. Want to just briefly take the board through what we were talking about then and what concerns were raised that causes to go back to the drawing board?
Yeah, absolutely. So for some background, this is the original site plan that was dated October 25, 2022 and was presented at the prior zoning board hearing, which was proposing to have a minor building expansion of approximately 60 square feet for the elevator for ADA accessibility, along with four parking spaces. The ADA parking was originally proposed along the street line with an accessible path that essentially circled back around through Prospect Avenue sidewalk and into the walkway that leads up to the Tower Club at the front of the building. And there were concerns from the board professionals regarding the existing London Plain tree and its root system in close proximity to the proposed parking area. And there are also concerns about the grades around the parking itself, too, just because the four parking spaces were relatively steep. And essentially where the original site plan had left off. I think that essentially covers the the original site plan, but
Moving to slide six, we kind of have the original plan and the revised one that we workshop with HPC. Want to talk about our attempts to to scale back a bit to 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 meet the comments that we had.
Right, yeah, so this is a great side by side comparison. So obviously, on the left hand side, we could see somewhere to slide five, the original four parking space proposal for the original application and the recently submitted site plan from I believe they're dated September 12, 2024, reflect the reduced parking based off the comment that we received from the board last time, as well as the board's professionals. And the intent of the design was to pull back the previous asphalt parking away from the London Plain tree's root system. In addition to that, the design also required a retaining wall to flatten the grades and provide a more accessible ADA route directly into the Tower Club.
So in the original design, the the driveway sloped from the street down almost to a subterranean kind of basement level by several feet. In the revised design, the parking was, while shrunken down from four to two spaces, was lifted up to the current level and and not recessed underground, essentially, potentially more visible. And while pulled away from the tree, still not necessarily 100% out of out of a an area of concern, I'll say. Switching and to be quick to slide seven, we did review this with HPC and appreciated their support generally of the concessions that were made, but ultimately the engineering and design issues with dealing with the revised trash location moved from the basement level up and the the retaining wall from the formerly cut area to a now essentially above the neighboring property as well as the proximity of the tree is caused the applicant to essentially push pause on this part of the project, and we are not seeking approval for this part of the site plan or the variances associated with the parking, but wanted to just remind the board where where we were with this and and the challenges and and thank everyone for their comments that that caused us to 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 rethink the project and perhaps eventually come back, but 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 at this point, the best way to respond to the concerns that the board and HPC had would is to continue trying to work on making this work either in a future application or in a different way. We'll likely have Sam come back after we go through the remind the board again, testimony already received of the elevator portion of the project, but I'll certainly pause for any any questions or comments from our civil engineer about the that part of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next witness, who I believe testified at the application then in in last time, John Hassan is on the design team. His firm is the architect of record for the site and John kind of was involved in supervising the the design here and and with the visual elements. John, want to just briefly remind the board your credentials, I suppose, and and the involvement of your you and your your partners in the project?
Certainly. Yep, again, my name is John Hassan with 3GHC Studio Architecture, graduate of Drexel University, licensed in several states, including Vermont and Maine. My partner Carl Cattila, who was not able to attend tonight, is our New Jersey Licensed Architect. Unfortunately, he was called away and not able to attend. I have supervised the drawings and have testified here before for you guys. And I'm here to do it again.
We'll accept you as an expert.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, John, the first, we'll start with slide eight here. These are photos again from the front. Those arrows kind of generally show, I guess, on the left from the street view and the right kind of from the neighboring property, the areas that we're talking about for where the elevator will go?
That is correct. Ryan, the elevator will be the west west side of the building. If you're looking from the street, it'll be on the right side there as the arrow is pointing to it. It occurs probably halfway between the front of the building and the rear of the building on the side there. Again, it's about 60 square feet, seven and a half by seven and a half feet square. And it will cover three floors, the basement floor, the first floor and the second floor. This gives the users the most access to all of the public spaces, the dining spaces, the social spaces. So it's kind of the best location for for that purpose. And the exterior will be clad with a brick veneer. We are kind of matching the existing brick as best we can. And we are utilizing the brick that was used during the rear addition that was done back in the the 80s, I believe that was built. So we have samples of the brick which we have submitted in the past and have been accepted. And the roof will have a nice hip roof on it, similar to character to the existing building there, as you can see.
All right, so this is slide nine, has the front elevation and kind of overlaid with the, you know, again, how would you describe its visibility from the street? It's partially visible or be a challenge to see it through some of the trubs or greenery?
Yeah, I mean, the grade slopes down, so you get a blocked view for just from the topography alone, and it is heavily, you know, vegetative there. So during the summer months, it will be very difficult to see, if at all.
There's a lot of vegetation that's going to come out for this or come out to get access to this area?
Not at all, not at all.
Thank you.
All right, moving to slide 10, as a reminder to the board that this property this property has not a really any real logical relation size wise to the floor area and technically we are over what is permitted for floor area. We are exceeding it by a small amount to allow for this addition of the elevator tower. That is a D four variance. We'll talk about that a bit at the end, as well as a building, not land coverage, but building coverage again for the footprint of the elevator tower itself. We've got up here where where thirty percent is permitted. We're going from thirty point four three to thirty point six eight for building coverage. Again, the the square footage of the tower itself, as well as floor area. Again, that's kind of two two stories of that same space. Is the increased floor area from point eight eight to point eight nine. Again, moving to slide eleven here, a couple other details. John, you still talk about the the height detail and how the the, I'll say, the setback issue that we've got by coming a little closer to the lot line?
Correct. So you will see there the elevation shows the height as being thirty one and a quarter feet, which is three inches, thirty one feet, three inches. From the basement elevation up to the peak of the roof there and and the topography lends itself that, you know, it's a sloping site. So from the front of the site, you're at the first level, but by the time you get to the rear yard, you're at the basement level. And so that so a lot of that is obscured from the street due to the topography there. And currently, there is a walkway that extends, you know, from the front of the building down to the rear yard or some steps and kind of a walkway. This elevator will interrupt that walkway a little bit and we're kind of expanding it over to the property line to still allow the walkway and allow pedestrians to access the rear yard from the front yard. So we're we're able to continue that.
So in addition to the variances talked on the on about mentioned on the other slide. This is the building essentially creeping a little bit closer to the lot line to allow this. That's would be a four point six feet as well as the kind of wrapping the sidewalk a little bit around it brings that to point five feet from from the property line, which is a new variance condition as well. John, were there any other? Are there any other real logical or otherwise options to to citing this elevator for accessibility?
Looked at all four sides of this building to find the best location. And what really drove this location was its access to the public spaces on the inside. As well, its obscurity from the road. It seemed like it kind of fit the best of both worlds there to be on the side of the street there. In the rear, it was challenged because there's a lot of glass in the rear and it's very ornate with the dining rooms and whatnot. The right side of the building has a lot of office space over there. So so that doesn't lend itself at all. That would be the east side. Sorry about that. The is really has a lot of the admin offices and not the the public spaces. So so it really made sense to be on the west side of the building. It gave everyone, the user, you know, access to to all the social places that they want to get to.
Here's the slide thirteen is a is that west side elevation showing the 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 tower as well as the other spaces, I suppose, behind us, right?
Correct, correct.
And this is the rear view, rear elevation. I think you had said this, but this the site does slope considerably from front to back and well, there was some discussion at the initial hearing of, you know, desire to to have access to the other outdoor levels. Ultimately, John, it's just it's not possible from this location to to connect all of those and just really the the interior floors is what you know, the best that could be done from this location?
That is correct. That is correct. There there is quite a difference in floor elevation in some of the spaces there, which is real challenge to make accessible and would probably require a second elevator to do so.
Possibly for a future project, but at the moment, not not that they can be accommodated from that same location.
Exactly, exactly. This location gives them, you know, all the the access to the most important spaces.
Just in in just to wrap up again. The while initially, we had a more ambitious project that included some parking changes in the front. Our intention is to to abandon those and not include them in the application. But only to provide the ADA elevator access at this point. That avoids all of the challenges of of the the important tree in the front yard and the visual elements of elevating parking in the front yard where where no other club has has that at this point. We continue to struggle with the design and visibility of raising up the trash enclosure from the current subterranean level up to ground level. And at this point, the importance of getting the elevator approved and moving forward so that users of this club have the ability to get in, you know, through the front door and then access all of the floors was was very important to the to the applicant. We do appreciate HPC and the board and your staff's attempt to work with us to go from the four parking spaces to the two spaces. First, the 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 lower level to the main level and all the iterations that we work for and we are appreciative, but ultimately, we just don't think we're we're there yet with something that makes sense for the applicant and addresses all the comments. So we are our desire is just to proceed with the ADA tower. Just as a reminder, there are four variances. Three of them are are bulk variances. We hope that you agree that in some combination of a C one, you know, that there's no other location than the narrowness or lack of other space on the site or the more flexible C two variance is appropriate for those. Also, note on on our floor area variance, you know, there's no actual criteria for a de minimis variance, but this is indeed a small one and that one where particularly this site can accommodate without any detriment. The changes and I also just want to note, there's quite a few benefits, both in the master plan. The municipalities land use ordinance specifically in the new master plan, historic preservation goals eighty two and eighty three. Facilitating adaptive reuse and restoration to accommodate growth and changing needs without substantial impact to the integrity of historic resources. That's I think what you heard tonight, what the applicant is really trying and able to do with HPC support. As well as balancing historic preservation efforts with the public interest in equity, which is essentially allowing this space to be accessible to those with mobility needs. And accommodating that without negatively impacting the history of the site. I'm not going to bore you with too much else here, but ultimately, the purposes of zoning, particularly A, B, C, G, I, and I want to point it particularly J to promote the conservation of historic districts. Are are particularly carried forward by this project. Happy to have any of our witnesses available for any questions. Certainly appreciative of your time again and staff and HPCs and working with us over all this time to try to come to something that worked for every element, but ultimately, we think we came to the best place in the that we can at this moment for for the the elevator. We also do have the two representatives of the applicant. If there are any questions for them, certainly have them available as well. Thank you.
Board members, any questions of the attorney, the applicant, engineer, or the architect? Okay. Mr. Kennedy, we're going to open this up to the public. Would you like to say anything?
No, thank you again.
Okay. Claudia, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
No, sir. Do you want to announce to raise their hands if they want to speak?
Yes, if anybody does want to speak on this application, please indicate that by raising your hands at the bottom of the screen. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Again, Mr. Kennedy, want to sum up?
All right, thank you again. While while we we were hopeful that we could do more on this site, it is a small and complicated site. Grading issues, important trees to the community and this applicant that we wanted to ultimately yield to unless we got it absolutely right. And there was still some work to go there. We perhaps we'll we'll see you again on this application or on this property with some requests after we review it, but but ultimately, the importance of getting this historic building accessible to those with mobility needs. The applicant is very proud that all users will enter through the the front door. Regardless of mobility requirements and be free to move through all of the floors finally, once this elevator is built. That is square and in 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 keeping with many of the goals of of the municipality's master plan and MLUL and zoning ordinance and despite the bulk variances, we think are of the proper balancing would allow them to be granted with with really no detriment to any of those issues. And then again, this is technically a D four floor area variance, so we do need five affirmative votes, but as I summed up before. Fully hope you'll agree that this de minimis increase in floor area is well supported and with with no negative impact whatsoever to any of those issues. Again, thank you so much for your time and for all the hard work over the last year and a half, I suppose, by staff and and HPC.
Thank you. Board members, let's go into executive session and discuss the application. Somebody like to make a comment?
We approve in the parking spaces. Is that part of this plan?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I move we approve this plan.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
All second.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, any questions on the motion? Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
I I I do have a question.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Derek, sum up or or actually specify what we're approving? I'm I'm a little confused. It's three things, okay?
Yes, sir. We have an FAR variance where the existing is eighty eight, the proposed is eighty nine, zero point eight nine, and the maximum permitted is zero point six percent. That's a hundred and eighty square foot increase. We have the building coverage variance thirty percent maximum, whereas thirty point six eight is proposed, and that's associated with the elevator. Footprint, the building setback, no building shall be erected closer to a street or a lot line than twenty five feet, and no portion of a building shall be erected closer to a street or a lot line than the height in feet of that portion. The proposed is four point six and existing noncompliant sheds being removed from the westerly property line that encroaches onto the neighboring property and violates the principal setback. The principal structure is being expanded and that reduces the existing side yard setback from ten point five feet to four point six. And the proposed building height of the elevator is thirty one point three feet in height adjacent to the sideline lot line. And then there's a small area that's paved over patio that is everything needs to be four feet from a property line and the proposal is zero point five feet or six inches for the patio walkway on the on the at the rear of the property. And those are the variances. And there's a, that's it. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chairman Cohen, there's Dan Weissman and Elizabeth Cohen have raised their hands.
Oh, okay. A little late, but that's fine. We'll open the public hearing up again since.
I don't know. Mr. Weissman is your land use engineer, but I'm sorry, who else wanted to participate?
Elizabeth Kim.
Okay, well, we've already sworn Elizabeth Dan. Let's just swear you in.
Sure.
You swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you missed myself or Miss Kim to go first. Doesn't.
Let's let Miss Kim go first. Elizabeth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wonder with this approval of this application, if the the board would consider the comment that HPC made number five, which was recommended that the samples of the building materials should be reviewed and approved by HPC in addition to the material for the new well, no, no longer retaining wall. And this was something that the applicant agreed to collaborate with the HPC Subcommittee Committee, advising its professional representatives.
I see no problem. We can include that in the resolution.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Who's next here?
Dan, did you want to speak?
Yes, just briefly commenting on it. Just wanted to summarize some of the comments that are in the memo, just tagging on to Derek's summary of the variances. Now that the parking area has been removed, any comments regarding stormwater manage management are no longer applicable. It looks like there will be no increase in impervious coverage for this building, therefore no stormwater management will be required. So any staff comments that were referenced in the staff memo regarding that don't apply. Same goes to any comments on the driveway. Now that the driveway reconstruction is no longer proposed, those comments don't apply. Other than that, the only comments that we would ask to be made conditions are regarding other agency approvals, Mercer County Planning Board and Princeton Sewer Department specifically. And then a comment regarding the applicant's engineer submitting an estimate for the construction for determination of inspection fees.
Okay.
And that was all. Thank you.
Claudia, did you capture that for our resolution? Karen, did you get that?
I did. I did.
Okay, so we'll add those to the resolution. Okay, board members, do you have any questions of Miss Kim or our engineer? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Claudia, call the roll, please.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, our next application is case Z twenty four dash five fifty five. Seventy nine Prospect Street, Lot fifty point oh one, Lot four, in the E two B zone. Karen, are the notices in order?
Yes, this application did require noticing. It is in order. The board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Okay. Claudia, I assume the applicant and their counsel are here? I think, I see.
Yes, good evening, Chairman Cohen. My name is Bob Riddoff. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
I think we know you, Bob.
I think so.
Derek, can you summarize your memo for us, please?
Yes, sir. Try to share the screen one more time here. Did that? Can everyone see the screen? Of the site plan?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, and applications filed by the Princeton Charter Club seeking classification and approval as a minor site development with variance relief in according to NJSA forty colon fifty five D dash seventy D four in bulk variances to construct three additions to the existing building and associated site improvements at seventy nine Prospect Avenue. It's located in the E two B zone in the former Princeton Borough. The point nine two acre sites located on the south side of Prospect within the Prospect Avenue Historic District. Site contains a three story masonry structure with a driveway access to Prospect Avenue to the east of the building, serving a four space parking lot toward the rear. The club also benefits from an area of use easement behind the rear line of the adjacent property containing a sand volleyball court and a basketball court. Back here in this area. The applicant is proposing to construct three additions to the existing building as well as an open air pavilion toward the rear of the lot totaling approximately thirty nine hundred square feet in floor area. The first addition is located on the eastern facade. It's three stories in height and facilitates a new elevator. It's in this area right here. The second addition is on the western facade. And it look, it is located mostly underground, the addition contains a electrical room, a terrace on the roof and which is above grade and connects to a new concrete sidewalk that connects the public sidewalk from Prospect Avenue to the rear pavilion, that's on the the left side of the property here, and that's the addition there. The third addition is at the rear of the building, that's back here in this area. And it's one and two stories in height. And to accommodate this addition, partial demolition of the existing structure is required. The roof of this addition will contain two balconies each accessed from the second and third floors of the existing building. Site improvements include construction of an ADA parking space over on the right hand side of the site adjacent to the proposed elevator and a concrete sideways walk to the west of the existing building with an ADA ramp to the access to new terrace on the western facade. Other improvements include an electrical transformer between the new concrete sidewalk and the side lot line landscaping and construction of a subsurface infiltration basin for stormwater management. The applicants requested waivers for the following checklist items, and staff has no objection to granting these waivers. Item A nine F archaeological and historic site survey and item A nine G archaeological and historic site construction protocol. The applicant is requesting a floor area variance. The maximum permitted in this site is zero point six where zero point six six three is proposed, the existing floor area is twenty two thousand four hundred and eighty two square feet, and the increase by approximately three thousand nine hundred and eighty four square feet for a total of twenty six thousand four hundred and sixty six, representing a seventeen percent increase in floor area. This is a D variance which does require five affirmative votes. Additional variances are required for setback, the proposed addition on the east facade is forty one feet in height and a setback twenty seven point seven feet, as you recall from the previous application. No building shall be erected closer to a street or lot line than twenty five feet, and no portion of that building shall be erected closer to a street or a lot line than the height and feet of that portion of the addition. There's also an addition, or excuse me, a variance for a loading berth which is required for buildings between ten and twenty five thousand square feet requirement is one berth, they've asked for a variance from that requirement. Staff notes that the applicant has applied for a variance for the maximum coverage requirement of thirty percent per B seventeen A three fifty one. The variance does not appear to be required as the values provided by the applicant are based on impervious coverage percentage. Coverage as required by seventeen A three fifty one is defined in section seventeen A two oh one, the definitions as the area covered by all buildings on a lot expressed as a percentage of the lot. Staff calculates the proposed building coverage to be approximately twenty three percent, which would comply with section seventeen A three fifty one. We ask that the applicant confirm this requirement, coverage per this requirement. The property is in a historic district, Elizabeth Kim is here tonight, and she will speak to that. The project increases impervious coverage by eighteen hundred square feet, meets the definition of a minor development under Princeton's Stormwater Control Ordinance, and is subject to the provisions and standards of the Stream Stormwater Control Ordinance. The applicant is proposing to install a subsurface infiltration basin on Lot fourteen to manage and retain the increase in impervious coverage. Similar drywell exists on Lot thirty two that was approved with a prior application to manage stormwater runoff on that lot. Staff has a couple of comments per the NJDEP Best Management's Practice Manual. Roof runoff that directly discharges into small scales subsurface infiltration basins, excuse me, can be pretreated by leaf screens, first flush diverters or roof washers, the applicant shall update the plans to include this pre-treatment. And additionally, at least one of the inspection ports that extends into the subsoil is required for subsurface infiltration basins. The applicant shall update the plans to provide an inspection port, and the stormwater management inspection and maintenance plan shall be revised to show the location of the port. Regarding bicycle parking, the applicant is proposing to use the existing bicycle racks within the public right of way to satisfy the bicycle parking provisions of section ten B two eighty two point two, which is permissible. However, these racks are wave type racks and do not meet the design standards under section ten B two oh four. The applicant shall provide racks that meet these design standards and amount to be determined by the board as discussed in section I, which covers parking and circulation. They're proposing one ADA compliant parking space adjacent to proposed elevator addition. No other changes are proposed to parking or circulation in this application. Although the eating club contains a hundred and fifty seats, there are numerous additional rooms used for assembly uses, bedrooms and bedrooms on the third floor. It's the position of staff has been the case with all these eating clubs that there is no parking standard that adequately addresses the eating club use. So in accordance with that, section seventeen A three forty three states for any other permitted buildings and uses for which there are no requirements set forth, appropriate and comparable off-street parking requirements shall be determined by the planning board or the board of jurisdiction, taking into consideration the amount of traffic to be generated, thereby the likelihood of all day or short term use of parking spaces, the location and availability of other means of access and other factors affecting the amount of traffic likely to be generated, and the need for parking. Similarly, it's the same story with bicycle parking, there aren't really any standards for bicycle parking, and it's the same charge to the board to review the information and determine if the parking provided by the applicant is is adequate. Comparison of the required bike parking spaces and vehicular parking spaces for certain buildings and uses within the Princeton zoning ordinance is provided below for the board's consideration. They've applicants shall provide the number of bedrooms, staff, and the number of graduate and undergraduate students to assist the board in determining the number of bicycle and vehicular parking spaces. The applicant shall, we understand that PSENG will only provide cut sheets of transformers once permits have been issued by the building department and PSENG, the applicant should provide details of the transformer once reviewed by the utility provider. We ask that the engineer, the applicant's engineer submit a construction cost estimate for the installation of all site improvements and public improvements, which will be reviewed and approved by Princeton's land use and engineer in order to determine the amount required for inspection fees and performance guaranteed respectively. That's the engineering and zoning memo synopsis. I have Elizabeth Kim here tonight also to talk about the historic preservation review, and Justin Lesko, the director of planning, is also available. He may give some high points of his memo, or if you have any questions, he's also here for for those as well. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Other than that, I'd like to hand off to Elizabeth Kim.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, please summarize your memo for us.
Thank you. So as Derek said, the Princeton Charter Club is also within the Prospect Avenue Storage District similar to the application you just heard. HPC reviewed this application on March seventeenth of this year. The Prospect Avenue Storage District is a type two district, which is reviewed by HPC, which is anything visible from the public right of way. So as Mr. Bridger had indicated, there is a demolition, partial demolition in addition to the rear of the building, and HPC did not comment on that because it's not visible. So in order to facilitate their new elevator and other additions, which which I'm sorry. The proposed elevator that they are indicated on the plan is on the west elevation of the building. And then the addition off the 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 west side of the building also, which is referenced as the west terrace, is where they are providing a new ADA accessible ramp to a new terrace that they're building, and they're converting a window into a door. And the door is going to mimic the style that they have on the north terrace. In addition, they have the new the new walkway that is connected from the public right of way along the west side of the property and connects to the west terrace and connects also to the open pavilion in the back of the property. So basically, those are the components of the application that HPC reviewed. At the meeting, the HPC appreciated the overview of Princeton Charter School's approach to their goals, which their vision that they have been working on for fifteen years, and I will leave that for the applicant to present. At the meeting also, the applicant addressed all the comments that was in my report. The only thing that I want to highlight on that is that there was a squash port building foundation that's in the back, which they are going to be removing because part of their pavilion is going to be built in the same location. The applicant was able to bring a lot of information about that squash port. And again, I'm going to leave that for them to represent. And the only change that they had from their submission is that they were just changing the hardware on the new door off the west terrace. So after the conversation, the presentation, HPC, you know unanimously supported this application, they felt that they did a really sensitive job designing, selecting the material and the placement of of all the components of the application. So they also had no objections to the variances, and they just really appreciate the fact that they were really keeping the integrity of the historic property as best they can to meet their goals. So any questions you may have, I'll be available.
Okay, thank you, Miss Kim. Okay. Are there any questions of Mr. Bridger or Miss Kim?
Yeah. It's regarding assessing parking. If I heard you correctly, Derek, you said when sort of when things don't fit into a box on this use, it's up to the planning board to kind of set planning requirements, but then you went on to say that we need to assess it. Did I hear you correctly?
Derek, wouldn't it be just whichever board is hearing this, since in this case we're hearing the site plan application as well?
Yeah, I said planning board, I mean, and then I said board of jurisdiction. So I, it says planning board in the actual ordinance, but it's a D variance before our board, so I think that charge goes to this board to come up with that determination.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Rodolphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and then again, by the way, I've been introduction, I have not appeared before you all in several months, my name is Bob Rodolphy, I'm an attorney with offices in Hopewell Township. I'm the attorney for this applicant. I've also been a member of Charter Club since way back in nineteen sixty eight, and I've served on their Board of Governors, which is similar, Derek, I saw that look. I've also served on their Board of Governors, which are like a Board of Trustees for many, many years and continue to do so and act as their chief counsel. So I'm very pleased to have partaken in this entire project from from day one. Derek has also very clearly and specifically described the nature of the applications, so I don't want to go into that again, I usually do, but I'll waive it at this point. The property, as you know, is seventy nine Prospect Avenue, it's Lot four in Block fifty point zero one on your tax atlas. And of course, we're in the E dash two B zoning district. My development team appeared before the HPC on March seventeenth and secured unanimous approval of our plans from that from that committee. Since then, we have taken the time to review the engineering and zoning report dated March sixth of this year, the planner's memorandum dated March twentieth, and also the HPC summary memorandum dated March nineteenth. We are prepared to address all the issues raised in each of those memoranda. I have three definite witnesses and a possible standby witnesses for your listening tonight. I'd like to start with Holly Trump, who was our magnificent club manager. She will attest to the basic operations of the club. Will tell you the real reasons for the various proposals in conjunction with this application, and also address the parking and the bicycle parking issues raised by Derek. We've worked those out successfully. My second witness would be Maura McClintock, you've heard from her before, she's a New Jersey licensed architect with a form of Ford III. Maura will discuss and describe the existing and proposed building elevations and floor plans in conjunction with this application. And thirdly, I have Russ Smith, who's a licensed civil engineer with Hopewell Valley Engineering. You've heard from him many times on various applications. He will discuss the specifics of our site plan. And standing on deck, if you need to hear anything about the specifics of our proposed construction, I have Michael Baldarosi from DVB Construction, he's our site contractor. I hope he's on the screen, he said he would be here this evening. So that's the basic lineup. I guess what you'd like to do now is Karen is to have all the witnesses sworn at the same time.
I think we we need Ms. Trump to put her video on
Right.
and to unmute herself. We can't see her at the moment.
Hold on. Let's see why I'm not coming up. Hold on. There we go.
There you are.
There you are. Sorry about that. Also, did you say, is it Michael Baldarosi?
It's Michael, with us tonight?
I see a screen that says Michael, but we have no video or sound.
Michael, is that you? I'd rather not delay, maybe you can pick up if the board want to hear from him.
Ms. Trump, Ms. McClintock, and Mr. Smith, you all swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Hi.
I do.
Yes. I do.
I do.
Yeah, I can't get on? Yeah, go out and come back in again. Sorry, that was our builder, he couldn't get in, so I suggested he go out and try to come back in again. Okay, Holly, ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Could you please state by whom you are employed?
Yes, I am the club manager of the Princeton Charter Club.
And how long have you been the manager of the Princeton Charter?
I've been manager for almost five years.
Okay, could you generally describe the area of your responsibilities as club manager?
I am responsible for the entire building, maintenance and upkeep of everything do with that, as well as the food service and all of the pieces that go into making sure the community itself of all of our membership, as well as alumni are well taken care of.
Okay, so it'd be fair to say that you're you're very intimately familiar with the day to day business affairs and operation of the club?
Yes, all financial and all, everything that has to do with this nineteen thirteen building, yes.
Okay, and you were involved with both the architect and their contractor in regard to the design of the proposed renovations from day one, correct?
Yes, yes, I was.
Okay. To give just a brief reason or three or four or five why we're doing this project, what is the need, what is the driving force for the need for the club's proposed renovations?
Well, we have a number of like larger portions of what what the club needs. If we want to talk about infrastructure, generally, we are living on borrowed time on a three hundred amp service for our facility. And forward thinking with that, we're also looking at where we can expand on possibly car chargers, things like that, that are needed, as well as we're going to need to have proper energy sources to get our elevator working and those kinds of things. Most importantly is the ADA access that we've been not having any success with when we have special events and or membership or university students that can't access the club and enjoy all the wonderful things about it. We have special events and or membership or university students that can't access the club and enjoy all the wonderful things about it. Also, we are kind of crunched right now in our dining space. We've taken some of our most beautiful rooms, uh, our club room, which. Is more of a lounging area as well as, um, our main foyer, as you walk in the door. Um, is cluttered with. A service line equipment for food service, as well as there's dining tables now in that great room. And we're just trying to expand enough to create the dining space and the servary space. For our membership as it is now. Um, it's a little bit tight. So. That is another piece, as well as. I guess. Me holding the responsibilities a- as club manager, I have over. Forty-five hundred alumni, as well as present membership that are counting on me to. Make sure that we still keep to the entire history, as well as there. All of the stories that I've heard over my five years of tenure that. Are things that they want to come back and look at this place as. A new and then married old building and those things they can point to that still exist. So. Those are very important aspects of, uh, this project and. The marrying of the old and the new is something very important, um, in generally just for this historic preservation portion of, 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 uh, our project.
Thank you. And we'll get into way more detail when Maura has her turn at bat to talk about the, uh, the floor plans and the, and the new elevations. Um, I just wanted to talk about just one or two other things, then we'll, we'll let you go, at least I will. Derek mentioned the issue pertaining to the bicycle rack that's currently. Present on the site. Could you explain, just give the board some history as to why it's there and. Who put it there and what we're going to do.
A year, at last summer in August, uh, the, the main construction of the Coldwater and lines were put in. Along Pop Prospect by the university. Uh, they tore up the whole front of our walkway. And submerged like fifteen feet down all these piping. And as they were putting everything back together, uh, Russ Hart and Kristen Applegate. With help of them, we looked at where our bike racks could go and what they proposed was putting the bike racks. That are on the rest of Prospect into the spaces to the front of our main entry brick walkway. So down towards the, uh, the roadway. Off of the walkway are these two waving bike racks that they just installed last August for us. Um, that are usually about fifty percent full during, um. During bigger service hours like, you know, lunch, dinner, those kinds of things.
How many spaces are accommodated by the current bike rack?
Oh, there's got to be at least twenty spaces or more than that. More than that, I think. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number for that.
And it's never more than half utilized?
Yeah, the, and, and it's, people are back to kind of walking a little bit more and not using bikes as much because the scooter, scooters were a big thing and got. Next, uh, last spring due to accidents. So I thought there might be more of an influx of, of bikes. But it really hasn't increased that much.
Okay, and you were part of a discussion with staff recently about an alternate location and type of, a new type of bike rack, correct?
Yes.
Maura, can you share your screen to show the board what our solution is on the bike rack while we're talking about it?
Dr. Dolphy, do you want this to be an exhibit or is this going to be part of a larger exhibit?
I think it's a separate exhibit. And this will just be a short discussion, but I just wanted to, uh, nip this one in the bud before we got into the. Regular presentation.
So this would be Exhibit A one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Holly, do you see the exhibit? Could you please describe what this exhibit illustrates? The salmon colored box.
Yes. Um, as you're coming down the walkway now, where that's, that's where you see the first entry area that's going to go to the new ADA access. Um, the side of the west side of the building, right as you come in through the bush line, there will be a, um. A bike rack area that will hold at least, at, we're looking at eight spaces. That will have the, uh, approved now U-shaped, uh, bike. Holding area that we would like to get submerged into the ground. And then we will be putting gravel. And, uh, border around that to, you know, make sure that we supplement any other bike needs. Since the wave bike area is kind of not fulfilling the needs. We decided that we were going to do that as a, um. As an alternate source that would be, um, that was proposed by both Mr. Weissman and Mr. Bridger.
Okay, and the current location of the bike rack is right below.
Right there, yeah.
I see.
Yes, there's two of them right there.
Okay, and in your opinion, is the proposed new location better than more appropriately located than the original location?
Yeah, it'll help because that's going to be a more well-utilized, um, walkway now, path of least resistance, so to speak. And if there's bikes and people stopping there, it will be an easy on-off. Um, with the walkway there also as a, um. As, as a quicker way to get in and out.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness at this time, um, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, we'll, we'll hold the questions till the end of the witnesses.
Okay.
Here with other board members.
Alright.
Okay, let's keep going.
Okay, keep going with Russ Smith, our civil engineer. Russ? No, I'm sorry, apologize. Uh, I want to start with, uh, Maura McClintock, the, uh, project architect. Sorry about that, Maura.
That's okay.
All right, would you please, uh, state your name and your profession and by whom you're employed?
Yes, I'm Maura McClintock. I'm a partner at Ford Three Architects. I am a Licensed Architect in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York. Um, I have testified before a number of zoning boards. In both New Jersey and Pennsylvania, and I was a member of my, um, local zoning board for five years.
Have you qualified to testify before this board before? I don't remember.
Not before this board. That's why I was getting my qualifications.
And Ms. McClintock, are you the, uh, Architect of Record for this?
I am the Architect of Record for this project, and I have supervised the development of all the documents.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll recognize you as an expert.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Cohen. So needless to say, Maura, you, um, you are familiar with the site and the general neighborhood?
Yes.
And you've been on-site, personally visited the Charter Club on several occasions.
I have been personally on-site and I have been involved with this project since two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. Should be a club member.
Honorary, yes.
Um, have you taken the time to review the several memorandas, memorandum that I mentioned in my opening remarks? So you're aware of the issues raised by, uh, the board staff?
Yes, I have read both of the memos, um, and have. Considered them in relationship to our application.
And you are prepared to address the issues which were raised as pertains to the architecture, the floor plans, and the building elevations?
Yes.
Okay, now, in preparation for this meeting, uh, we agreed that you would prepare a slide deck to enhance your presentation. Do you have that?
I do have that slide deck.
The board now let you run with it from. Slide number one.
All right, let me share again.
Mr. Rodolphy, you would like this to be collectively A two?
A two is just fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have, um, twenty-five slides in my deck. We may not look at all of them. Um, some of them are here in case questions come up and things like that.
Okay.
So. To begin, um, I just wanted to give a brief overview of the context of the club and its development. So the building that we're all familiar with today is actually, well, in, in the history of the club, it's the third clubhouse, but it's the second clubhouse. House on this site. The original building in nineteen oh three was a house which was then. Um, which predated the club and was then renovated by the club and used briefly. And, you know, at that time, as you can see in these photographs, Prospect Avenue was much less developed, you know, to. The south was countryside, looking down across the valley, and then immediately to the north, at that time, the football field was there. Um, this sort of sighting. You know, really, I think, helped the clubs. Develop their, um, you know, they're definitely a kind of key linchpin for alumni involvement with the university and the community. Um, by coming back to these clubs and using them as a base during, you know, various events at the university. So. Um, this was. These are photos of the original building, and in the background here, you can see the building that was the squash court. That has been mentioned several times. Um, that was, we did a little bit more research after, and speaking with club members after we went to HPC and. Have been told anecdotally that that was built around nineteen oh five. Um, had fallen into disrepair by the late seventies and was taken down to the ground in the mid eighties. So the current building was constructed circa nineteen and opened in nineteen fourteen, designed by Melior and Miggs. Again, you can see the squash court building in the background. Um, the front facade is highly symmetrical Georgian style. It's a wonderful building. Um, and the building really today remains virtually unchanged from when it opened and served a membership of maybe forty people. Uh, you can see here again how the site was at the time of the original construction and some of the interesting, wow, highly symmetrical. On the front facade, the rear is this sort of L shape. That was designed intentionally that way to open up to the southeast, taking advantage of views and letting sunlight into the building. Today, the site is, you know, a completely different environment. Um, it's much denser, you know, the surrounding area is much denser, and then the recent introduction of the C's. School of Engineering and Sciences Development to the south has really changed the character of their lot and how it feels. So these are graphical representations of the existing site plan and proposed. Um, my presentation will just kind of walk you through, as everybody has mentioned in their, from their memos, Elizabeth and Derek. We have sort of three distinct additions plus the pavilion. Um, so, you know, some noticeable things regarding the existing site, as previously mentioned, to the south, we have the easement area. This is a use easement only. Um, the club cannot do any development in this area. The, um, service access is to the east and is quite narrow. It's right up against the lot line pretty much. As you can see, there's a small dumpster trash enclosure here. Um, and this, similar to the testimony we heard in Tower about the site dropping down, this site does a similar thing. So, you know, from. The front on Prospect Avenue, the building appears. To be much shorter, and then as you get down here, you know, the full story of the basement is revealed. So coming from the, um, the approach from the university. As discussed, as Holly mentioned, you know, we are. Amending our proposal to include additional bike spots here at this new west walk. Um, bringing students in with the introduction of a ramp. And everyday access to the first floor and primary program areas.
Right.
That you continue down the site, um, there's the new open air pavilion. Coming around in our addition in the back, and then the elevator addition to the east as discussed. So these are, these are existing views from the street, and we can just, we'll kind of go through the different pieces of the design. Uh, as Elizabeth mentioned, you know, we have worked very hard with the club. Um, and then also trying to follow the Secretary of the Standards, Interior Standards for Historic Preservation, you know, looking at, um. Having the additions relate to the historic building, but not necessarily mimic it and, you know, so that you can still. Read the original building, um, with the additions being subservient to, you know. Diminutive to it. So the front facade, you know, one of the reasons why we chose to make this the ADA entrance on the west side. Rather than trying to incorporate a ramp at the front was really due to. The highly symmetrical nature of the facade and not wanting to alter that. Uh, we did look, we spent a lot of time looking at the potential of using a lift. And other options and really just felt at the end of the day that that was detrimental to the building. So this approach with the west addition patio addition has been developed. Um, from the street, the elevator addition here on the east is. Recessed, um, and is some, you know, somewhat kind of diminutive in scale. The, um, these slides are about the west approach and the transformer location here next to. The west, um, patio. We went through long negotiations with PSA NG about trying to get this, um, as far back into the site as we could. This ended up being our sort of compromised location, and it is immediately adjacent to Ploister's trash enclosure. Um, so it did seem an appropriate sort of utilitarian location. Um, this, the placement does fully comply from a zoning perspective. And we will be continuing to work with HPC on screening it with native plants. So this is the current proposed, um, planting plan. Um, which will be continuing to develop. There are a number of trees being taken down here for this west entrance. Um, so we are planting new trees in accordance. With the, the appropriate ordinances. These are views from, of looking at the west of the building, showing the new entryway and the pavilion and the rear. The pavilion, which, so you can see here, this is the, um, foundation of the. Former squash court, which will be removed. The pavilion, um, will be cited partially over where this was. But it generally is the same size. Um, and its architecture relates back to the roof of the building and other structures. For the rear addition, um, one of the things we did want to clarify, just so everybody understands, is it's really actually a very minimal extent of demolition. Um, the ground floor level that you see here will fully remain. Um, and what we're really taking down is this porch roof. And the railing systems, and then the addition will be built over that. Um, you know, and we're keeping various, trying, trying to work as much as possible with the existing architecture. Rear elevation, so you can see here, the, um, the elevator addition, it does have a grade level entrance. The accessible parking spot that was mentioned is immediately adjacent to it. Um, so this door will both serve. As a way for, you know, a visitor who was coming to the club in a car needing access. Um, and, but it also will really support staff and student activities and accessing the site. So the west side of the building, I'm sorry, the east side of the building where the elevator is located, it's, um, you come down the drive. The grade starts dropping down. This is the dumpster enclosure I had mentioned previously. And the elevator addition will sit against the existing building here, this area in pink. Um, or seen here. And so wow, and then you can see, this is just sort of to give you a sense of the relationship. Um, the height of, we purposely only kept this elevator serves the ground or basement level, the first floor and the second floor. Those floors contain the service and public spaces of the building. The third floor is entirely bedrooms. And the club. Made the decision to limit the height of the elevator so that they could minimize the, um, necessary height of the addition, you know. We had taken the elevator up to the third floor, it would have started, you know, it would have looked out of scale with the existing building. Says the frontal, the elevation of this side. So that's, I, if, is, is the board interested in seeing floor plans or does this? So, that's, I, if, is, is the board interested in seeing floor plans or does this give you a sense of how the building sits? You know, I want to be mindful of everyone's time. Mr. Chairman, do you have a preference?
Board members, do you want to know anything more about the interior? No, we can keep going. I do have one question though. You, you said the, the, the club made a, a cautious decision not to provide handicap or elevator access to the third level, which are, which are bedrooms.
There is also a bedroom on the ground level. So, they felt that, you know, by, we have the one room that is accessible. And that, that, you know, that, and that, that's an existent room. There's always, that, that room was originally the matrons room. When the club first opened, that's how it's labeled in the plans and today is used as a student bedroom.
Okay, so there is, there is a bedroom and a full bathroom.
Yes.
Okay, very good. That was the only question I had. Board members, do you have anything else you'd like to ask the, the architect?
I have two questions. Could you go back to slide ten?
This one?
Uh, one more. This one. Trying to figure out where these two chimneys came from.
They're on the, so there, it's part of this is that you're, you know, when you look at this, you can see them, so this is the ar- architect, the Melior and Miggs drawings. And you see the one, this is the thought, the one on the west side.
Yeah.
And then this, what's shown back here is all the way on the back.
But it doesn't show up in that other picture. That's what I was.
It's right here.
I know. No, I, I know it's there. It just doesn't in that one, that this picture, the south lawn picture. No, I'm sorry. Never mind. It doesn't matter.
Okay. They exist.
I have one other question that, that probably doesn't matter either, but I'm wondering, are you going to do anything else to try to screen the new buildings?
Oh, the, the Princeton buildings? So, the club, the university and Holly can talk, attest to this as well. The university is supposed to be doing additional plantings, you know, so the construction fences are still up. And the, we have been, you know, the club has been told that the university will be coming in and doing lot line plantings. I don't know what the timing is for that, but the club, the club's intent is to wait to see what the university puts in and then they may discuss with the university supplementing it with additional plantings to screen.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, any other questions of the architect? Okay, please continue.
Okay, how, how, there, Moira, is there anything else you'd like to add or think you've covered everything?
I can just talk, speak to the, the back area where we're going to do that development of some plantings with the university. We were supposed to start some of that in April of this coming year, but it's been delayed. There's also going to be a a wall and a railing to the, to the, more of the east side of that back portion of our easement. And then their plantings dropped down almost like fifteen to twenty feet. So, whatever they're going to do back there is only going to give us probably about eight to nine feet after like full growth to give us some screenings. So, we're going to really review that with them and see what the final result is. We do have plans in place that they've supplied to us. But I feel that over time, we're going to need to come up with some taller and more blocking, I don't know what word to use, to make it seem like it's softening. Because that, it, when you're there, it is very much staring in your face. So, we need to soften the space. And I think, as Moira said, that we have to wait to see what their final outcome is of their original plantings and then work with them with it so that it works out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Adolphy.
Okay, shall we move on to, to the engineer at this point, Mr. Chairman?
So, up to you.
Yeah, okay. Russ, thank you, Moira, very much for everything.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Russ, you ready?
I am.
Do you please remind the board who you are and what you do?
Yes, I am a professional engineer and a professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm president of Hopewell Valley Engineering. I've been licensed since nineteen eighty-eight, both planning and engineering. And I have testified before the, both boards in Princeton at various times throughout my career.
We will accept you as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. John. Russ, you're familiar with Princeton's land development ordinance as well as its master plan?
Yes, I am.
And the site plans, which were submitted in conjunction with this application, were prepared under your direct supervision?
Yes, they were.
And are you familiar with the site and the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, I am.
Have you ever personally visited the building and the site?
I have visited the site and several of the other clubs over the years, yes.
Okay. Because you worked on the cap and gown renovation, didn't you?
Uh, yes, we had two applications with cap and gown. I'm currently working on another one. I'm not sure I'm supposed to say which one, so I won't.
Okay.
Will be another one.
All right. And have you taken the time to review the various memoranda submitted from planning and zoning and other staff at, from Princeton?
Yes, I have. I did not see any issues that we would not agree to address. I will attempt to include the, those issues in my presentation this evening.
Okay. And at my request, you prepared a slide deck, which I see in front of us. So, why don't you proceed with your slide deck as you discuss the site plan aspects of this application?
And I guess we could mark this, uh, exhibit A three. And this is a, a series of three slides, color, engineering drawings and aerial photographs. And it's dated March twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
All right. So, the, the first drawing that we're looking at, which is slide number one. It shows two views. The view on the left is an existing conditions plan. This is our existing survey that we submitted with the project. It shows our lot, which is lot fifty point oh one, lot four. Point nine two acres in size and fronts on Prospect Avenue. North is to the top of the drawing. The building is shown in a brown color. This is the old squash court remains. All the paved areas are shown in gray. The red areas are retaining walls. And we didn't color the individual trees, but the shrubbery is shown in a darker green. We also have the use of an easement area on the university property at the rear of the site or to the south. It's total of point five six acres. So, both put together, we have one point four eight acres in, in usable area for the club. The area in the back, as I said, is a use easement. We do have some volleyball courts and some sheds. But it's primarily outdoor activities. There are no structures other than the movable sheds that we have. The structures are, are limited to lot four. It's seventy-nine prospect. The building is twenty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-two square feet. Our driveway, as Moira said, is very narrow. It's eleven feet. It leads to a loading area now with access to the building here. And then we have four parking spaces at the very end of the lot. Pedestrian access, of course, down the center of the, of the property into the front door. There's also access on the side and at the rear of the site. Although not connected by any sidewalks, which this project will remedy. The aerial photograph, this is a twenty twenty aerial photograph. Zoom in just a little bit. So, this shows our, our site is located here in red with the easement area and dashed red, Prospect Avenue to the top. It shows the adjacent Cloister Inn, Bope's Hall. Across the street is Bowen Hall and North Garage. Olden is here. And to give you a general idea of what the surrounding properties look like. Let's jump to slide number two. This is the site plan. I'm going to first just quickly describe the proposal. I, I think it's been done pretty well by the previous witnesses, but let's quickly go through that and then we'll talk about the zoning and where we stand with all the various requirements of the E two zone. Let's start with the concrete pedestrian walkway. I'm tracing that now. That runs from Prospect on the east, on the west side, excuse me, of the building to the back to the proposed pavilion, which I'm circling now. That pavilion is seventeen by thirty-two. It's located in the same general area as the squash court foundation that remained. And that, of course, will be removed when the pavilion is constructed. This walkway provides access to the new bluestone terrace, which is one of our accessible location points as, as Moira described. There is a ramp that allows accessible access here. Below that is our new utility room. So, they utilize that space below grade for our new utility access. The red area here is the new transformer location. This is the bicycle parking that Holly was describing. We need eight spaces and I'll describe how I came up with eight spaces. But we need eight spaces. So, we need to provide four inverted U bike racks. You can put a bike on either side of the inverted U's. As Holly said, we'll install them in the ground with gravel and a metal edge. That gravel will be gray in color to kind of match the sidewalk and, and so that it looks good. As we work our way around the back of the site, Moira described the additions. I will go through that again. The handicap space in the loading zone, I'm circling that area now. That provides, that's located really in the old loading area. And that provides direct access to the elevator addition. So, you can see the arrow on the, on the brown elevator addition is where you go into the elevator at ground level. That loading zone, as somebody gets out of their vehicle, leads directly to the elevator. So, it's real convenient. We are proposing some sidewalks, both in front of the handicap space. And also in this area, this is a sloped sidewalk, so that provides access to this area behind the building. We are going to redo the pavement in this area. It's already paved. It's just in, in some bad condition. There's, there is some drainage that ponds in this area and I'll explain how I'm going to correct that when we get to the next slide. Let's look at the zoning. This shows the requirements for the E two zone. Now, because our lot is point nine two acres and the easement is point five, six acres, we have to use the zoning requirements for a lot that is less than one acre. So, why is that important? That's important because when the lot is less than one acre in the E two zone, you have coverage and you have floor area ratio requirements that come into play. If the lot was one acre or larger, then you would not have those requirements. So, we're very, very close to that requirement, but we're not at one. So, technically, we have to use the requirements for less than one, even though when we add our addition in, we're at one point four eight. So, the, the requirements for variances are for the side yard where the elevator is going to go. We're proposing twenty-seven point seven feet. And the existing building is at thirty-seven point eight feet. The total building height is forty-three. So, when you're looking at the existing building, it would be forty-three required, thirty-seven point eight is what exists. The elevator addition is forty-one feet high, as Derek explained. And we're proposing twenty-seven point seven. So, a C variance is required for that. I can confirm lot coverage and I did correct it in this chart on my exhibit. It's seventeen point four because we only use the building, not the impervious existing and it's twenty-three point one proposed. So, we're less than thirty and no variance is required. When you look at the floor area ratio, as I said, point six is required. And this is only of the point nine two acre lot. Currently, we're, we're at point five six one. And proposed will be at point six six three. So, we exceed the point six. So, therefore variance is required. And as Derek said, this is a D four FAR variance. So, it's a use variance. We looked at two things in calculating the required motor vehicle spaces and bicycle parking. And this project does not ex, you know, expand the membership. So, for example, the number of seats, which is a, a way that, that we've used to calculate the required parking, both motor vehicle and bicycle in the past, isn't changing. The number is a hundred and fifty. And since it's not changing for the motor vehicle parking tabulation, we're saying that there's no new parking required. So, there's no need to ask for a variance for parking. But bicycle parking, we want, we calculated the number of spaces required because we're proposing a new bike rack on our property. That number is one hundred and fifty seats divided by twenty because it's one space for all, for twenty seats. So, it works out to be seven and a half. So, we round up to eight. So, the two bike racks that Holly was talking about are located here. I'm circling them now with my cursor. They're going to re- remain there, but we're also going to have eight more here. These bike racks match everything else on the street. So, we really didn't want to change those out to something different. So, we're proposing the eight spaces. And based on our tabulation of eight, we will comply and we'll use the inverted U type bike racks, which are permitted by your ordinance.
Russ, are you prepared to address the special reasons for the use variance requested by the club?
Uh, yes, I just have one more slide and then I'll get into that.
Okay.
Sorry, I, I tend to talk slowly. I apologize. I'll, I'll talk faster, I promise. All right. So, this is a, a color rendering of the utility grading and landscape plan. And we, again, have it colored in the same manner. The building's brown, grass is green and the shrubbery is a darker green. So, one of the things that we were asked for by HPC is to add the tree numbers that are being removed. So, we've numbered from one to four. They're all in this area. Total replacement trees required is nine. We have proposed nine replacement trees. There's a maple, a couple maples. And these a couple maples, a hack, a couple hackberries, a magnolia and three elms. There's also a couple evergreen trees, actually thirteen total, and they're hollies. And then some shrub and ground plantings. I know we're going to work on this with the HPC, but those shrub, those shrubs and ground plantings are going to screen the transform. Let's take a quick look at the stormwater. So, we had a design stormwater. This is a minor stormwater project. We have a subsurface infiltration bed. It's located in this location. We did two tests out here to determine that we had primeval soil and that we didn't have any groundwater issues. So, we could properly site this. We're increasing the impervious surface by one thousand eight hundred and sixteen square feet. We have to provide a volume of eight hundred and ten cubic feet to store that stormwater. The roof. Uh, the roof, uh, the new roof areas will be piped to this basin. Uh, so that we can store that increase in runoff. And we'll have a overflow pipe, uh, in case it doesn't recharge, uh, for the larger storms. And that'll tie into an existing storm manhole, which is in our loading area. Uh, this is that area that I was saying, there's some pavement distress and we're going to be replacing the pavement. Uh, it's because the water tends to pond there a little bit. So to correct that, we're going to put a open grate on this manhole and that will allow the stormwater to get into the. Into the manhole and drain out. Uh, it eventually gets into the manhole, but it moves very slowly because it's a, a solid grate. So that's the stormwater. Uh, Derek, uh, mentioned a couple of stormwater issues in the memo. Uh, leaf screens, uh, pre-treatment. Uh, and, uh, we have to put in one observation port, which will take care of. All right, uh, I would like to go through the, uh, the, uh, variance proofs. Uh, let me just go through the two C variances first. Um, we have a C variance for loading space. That's B seventeen A dash three forty-four B. I believe that two are required because we're just above the twenty-five thousand square feet. I know we had talked about that only one was required, but I think technically two because the. After the addition, we're just over the twenty-five thousand. Um, I, I see this as a C one variance, uh, the shape of the property and the physical features located on it create practical difficulties. Uh, if we were to comply with this requirement, you just don't have the room. Uh, and there's no place to go to, to gain that. Uh, very narrow driveway, no room for truck turnaround and a narrow side yard. So this is a pre-existing condition. Uh, and our deliveries function comfortably without this loading space and have for many years. Uh, and, uh, deliveries are mostly for food and are relatively infrequent. Finally, the last C variance is a, is for our side setback. It's B seventeen A dash three fifty-one D. Uh, forty-one feet is required. Uh, thirty-seven point eight feet's existing, uh, and. Twenty-seven point seven feet is proposed. Uh, this, I see this as a C two variance and under those requirements, we need to show that the. Variance will, will promote or advance a purpose of zoning. And I see, uh, uh, the promotion of the general welfare, which is, uh, purpose A. And promote sufficient space in appropriate locations, purpose G. Uh, the proposed elevator has been positioned to allow access from the new accessible space and will provide. Accessible, uh, access for accessible, uh, to the building and to the, uh, first and second floors. Um, and will the ben- will the benefits of granting the variance outweigh any detriments and certainly the need to, um. Uh, provide the, the, uh, elevator tower provides that accessible access. Uh, it's developed in an existing developed area. And existing vehicles will not be impacted. So the obvious benefits. Uh, far outweighing the detriments, uh, by these deviations. Uh, then finally I'd like to go through the, uh, use variance, which is, as I said before, a D four use variance. Uh, it's required to per- uh, to exceed the permitted floor area ratio of point six. Uh, the building floor area proposed is increasing from twenty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-two square feet to twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-six square feet. Uh, that's a three thousand nine hundred and eighty-four square foot increase. Uh, and the FAR, uh, is point six six three. Um, so we must show that the, the, uh, site will accommodate, uh, the additional FAR. Uh, and as I said before, this is required because our lot is point nine two acres. It wouldn't be required if we had one acre or more in our lot. And essentially we do have that because with the easement, the use easement, we are over one point four acres. So the granting of use variances must weigh the positive negative criteria. Uh, court decisions have emphasized that the promotion of the general welfare is an ML UL purpose of zoning. That most clearly amplifies the meaning of special reasons. And the enhanced proof requirement from the Medici decision is not required here since the club is a permitted use. Uh, positive criteria, let's look at some, uh, uh, purposes of zoning that. That this, uh, use promotes. So, uh, purpose A to encourage municipal action to guide the most appropriate use or development of all lands in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals and welfare. And purpose C to promote adequate light air and open space. The introduction of pathways from Prospect Avenue to an accessible entrance on the west side of the building. Uh, and an accessible space in the rear. Uh, are positive. There's currently no access. There's no di- uh, disabled access, uh, for this building. So these improvements do provide this. Uh, the dining room and servery addition will allow. Existing interior spaces to be returned to their original use and improve internal circulation. An electric upgrade will be completed for the overall safety of the building. And its occupants as the existing service is undersized by today's standards. Uh, finally, outdoor terraces, natural ventilation. And an open air pavilion have been designed to provide adequate light air and open space. Uh, purpose G, uh, to. Promote sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of activities, both public and private. The project includes the expansion of the dining server, server area to better serve club. Membership while incorporating features that continue and improve the use of exterior spaces. And finally, I to promote a desire, desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. The design of the accessible terrace on the west side will have similar elements to the original terrace. Such as a stone foundation and cast stone ballustrade system. The pavilion will have a roof with flared edges similar to the main building and will have a standing scene copper roof. The elevator addition on the east side is in pro- in proportion to the existing building. And incorporates both stone foundation to match the existing building and stucco for the upper levels. The rear dining server area expands upon the existing first floor outdoor terrace to provide enough space. For dining equipment and new mechanical systems and storage. And finally, purpose J to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts. Open space and valuable natural resources. The addition had, the additions have been designed to respect the historic design of the structure while upgrading the utilities, dining spaces. And accessible access functions of the building. Uh, finally, I have to look at the negative criteria. Uh, no variances may be granted unless the board, uh. Can find that it can be, they can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Uh, as to A, there's, there will be no substantial impact on the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Charter club is bordered by other existing eating clubs. So the neighborhood remains consistent with adjoining clubs. Uh, we are improving the existing building and grounds. We are upgrading the electrical system. And we are adding features to accommodate physically disabled members, visitors and aging alumni. Uh, as to B, there is no change from the existing use. To the proposed use, just a vastly improved one. Also, as previously noted, the club uses a total. Uses a total lot and easement area of one point four eight acres. Uh, which under B seventeen dash three fifty-two would not require an FAR variance. There will not be any adverse impacts on the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. I apologize for the length of that, but that is the conclusion of my testimony.
Yeah, thank you very much. You did a very thorough job, Russ, as usual. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that, um, concludes our presentation. At this point.
Steve, you're muted.
Sorry, um, can you take the, uh, site plan off the screen, please?
Yes.
Okay, board members, do you have any question of, uh, any of the previous witnesses or the attorney? Okay, um.
Steve, I, I, I do have a question if no one else.
Sure.
Um. Regarding the, the parking and I understand you're not increasing membership, um. And I understand that point. How, do you have written rules? How do you control parking with just four parking spaces?
Holly, can you possibly answer that question?
Sure, um, well, most of the time, um, the, the, the spaces are taken by, um, some of the undergraduate members. But in the men, a lot of the time, parking ends up happening that we end up parking, um, and on the street or the garage. Um, we don't, it's not a, um. It's nothing that. We kind of make it work. We don't need to have more than what we have existing because we've kind of gotten into a routine of that where it, it, it's. It satisfies and it also satisfies a couple of the undergraduate, uh, members that live at the club as well.
Okay, and so are those. They're not assigned or they are assigned?
The, they're assigned, they are, two of them are assigned. Um, to, to the space, uh, for, for undergraduate membership and then the remaining are for, um. For whoever we have and then the rest of our staff and people park elsewhere. And if you have a lucky day, even as an alumnus that comes by, you can. Sneak in and give me a call and maybe there's a spot for you. That's how we kind of do it.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? For the, uh, witnesses or the attorney? Okay, all right, Mr. Adolphy. We will, uh, open this up to the public. Do you want to say anything before we do that?
And I don't think so, Mr. Coe. I think, uh, our professionals have done a yeoman's job of explaining everything and, um, giving all the. Important and necessary details, uh, for the board to hopefully approve, uh, all of our, all the aspects of this application.
Hey, thank you. Okay, uh, to the public, we're going to open this to public comment. If there are anyone who would like to speak on behalf of this application, please indicate that. By raising your hands on the bottom of the screen. Claudia, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
Um, Elizabeth, just raise her hand. Elizabeth Kim.
Okay. Okay, Elizabeth, please.
I realize this is a time for me to talk and not when you're making a motion. So, um. So in support of the application, I mean, there are certain things that I want to kind of elaborate on, which I didn't. Just because, um, I know that the applicant had a great presentation, which they had done for HPC and they've also done tonight. So, um, this. Um, eating club. If you look at the old original designs, has actually never changed. So what you see today. Is what it looked like at the time it was constructed and it's really in pristine condition. So, um, the sensitivity that they had done in the design where an elevator is needed, which we're seeing. Um, and I know there's more coming. Um, and the fact that they are meeting the Secretary of Interior standards, which is you do not replicate the material. That you have in an existing building because you want to define what's existing and what's in addition. So they did keep the water table at the same elevation. Um, they changed the material instead of the stone to a stucco. They, um, provided some faux windows with some cath, cast stone, um, sills and headers. To just kind of break up the mass of the north and east elevation of that elevator tower. Um, but to, um, also retain the rhythm of the fenestration, really along the streetscape more than the, than the side elevation. So all those things were really, um, done sensitively. Um, in addition, the applicant had also offered instead of the proposed. Slate roof on the tower that they would consider putting a copper, which would be in keeping with their pavilion. Um, so HPC was really very happy with the sensitivity that they had done with this. Um, in addition, um, which I inadvertently left out. Um, there was a concern which was the. Transformer. It's big. It's six feet tall and we had seen that when they came in for concept review, I think last March in two thousand twenty-four. And, um, what we understand is PSCNG is going to be imposing this on all the eating clubs. They're not going to be upgrading their line. On Prospect Avenue. They're going to impose it on, uh, the eating clubs. And what, when we had had this discussion at HPC. Um, they had told us that they wanted to actually put it very close to the right of way. So they were able to come to an agreement that they could push it back. Um, so one of the. Um. One of the things that the applicant agreed on is that they would work with HPC to make the landscape integrate better. With what's there or what's being added, only because you have a six-foot transformer and. You're trying to screen it. You're going to think what's behind there. That's why she wanted to be able to work with them and the applicant had agreed on that. So. Again, in support of what the applicant has done and the sensitivity of. Um, the design they came up with, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, um, Claudia, has anyone else indicated that they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
There are no hands.
Okay. All right, we'll give that a second or two. All right, we're going to close the public portion of the hearing. And again, Mr. Adolphy, before we go into executive session, would you like to say anything?
Uh, I think I will defer the opportunity, Mr. Coe, as much as I love to speak and, um, to the board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, board members, we're going into, going into executive session. Does anyone have any? Comments on this application, questions or possible motion? Well, I'd like to say, I think the, the proposed modifications to the house are. Very well done and in keeping with the original character of the building itself. From an architectural standpoint.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
I would like to say that Michael, maybe Michael. That is the same thing I did in one of the slides. There were at least seven or eight cars parked down in the bottom of that. Lot in one of the pictures and. Since I live on Prospect, I've given up on parking. So it doesn't make any difference to me, but I think parking must be a horrendous problem for all those. Their kids that want to park. But I, I do like the project. And I, uh. Unless somebody else is going to speak, I'll. Suppose that we, uh, approve it.
Uh, do you, do you, do you want to add to that motion? I believe the applicant has indicated that they will comply with the staff comments. In the Bridger Weisman memo and with the HPC comment. So I don't know if you'd like to make that a condition of the resolution.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, I'll second. Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Okay, Claudia, would you like to call the roll, please?
Ms. Coulson? Eve? I can't hear you.
I know, I was having trouble unmuting it. Yes.
Miss, Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's been a pleasure seeing you all again and we really appreciate your approval. Listen, I will be looking forward to starting construction at the earliest possible date.
Thank you. That's great.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, board members, we have one more case. Does anyone want to take a short break before we move on?
Yes, please.
Okay, it is nine forty-one. How about we give it five minutes to nine forty-six? Okay. Thank you. Okay, sorry, the delay on my part. Um. We're back in session now. And our last and final case of the evening is file number Z two twenty-four dash four eighty-one, six fifty Great Road. Block thirty-five point oh one lot, one oh one, one point oh one, two point oh one, eleven and twelve in the E four T, T-zone. Karen, are the notices in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bridger, can you give us your memo, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the applicant, uh, Bright Horizons Children's Center LLC, doing business at Stephen Kate's Camp, um, was granted minor site plan approval and a temporary D-one use variance by the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment on June fifth, two thousand twenty-four to operate a for-profit camp at Princeton Day School for the summer of two thousand twenty-four. The approval contained a condition whereby the board retained jurisdiction of the application and required the applicant to return to the board in the spring of two thousand twenty-five for a public hearing to review any negative impacts from the board's or the camp's operation, excuse me, and to have the opportunity to request a permanent D-one use variance at that time. Um, the applicant shall provide testimony at the hearing regarding any negative impacts from the camp. Um, the applicant agreed to use best efforts to request the municipal governing body to review the zoning district standards with respect to the distinction made between for-profit and nonprofit camps. The applicant shall address this concern at the hearing and that's basically, uh, our memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address them.
Thank you. Or any questions? Okay.
Um, I, I did have a question. Derek, were they supposed to have done some stuff and, and judging from this, they, they didn't do it? Is that what I'm reading between the lines?
Uh. I think I'll let the applicant speak to that, um.
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Believe they have testimony to address some of these issues. Thank you, Harlan.
Thank you. And who's representing this case?
Yes, good evening, Chairman Benjamin Wine of Prime Two Bell and Misselli on behalf of the applicant Bright Horizons, AKA Stephen Kate's Camp. First off, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Not in my usual spot, so figured I would check in on the connection. Uh, so first and foremost, um, with respect to, uh, I'll, I'll address that, uh, that comment, uh, Mr. Tenenbaum directly. Um, as it pertains to Mr. Bridger's memo, uh, there were a couple of items. I, I couldn't have summed it up any better than Mr. Bridger himself. There were two, two effectively conditions of the temporary use variance approval that was granted prior to summer twenty twenty-four. The first condition, relevant condition, was that, uh, we would use best efforts to, uh, to speak with the governing body to attempt to have the ordinance reviewed and potentially change to eliminate this for-profit camp as a uh, as a use variance within the ordinance, um, which would effectively take away jurisdiction from this board and allow us to simply operate in perpetuity without any, uh, any further oversight from this board. And the second item was to, in case that were to go nowhere, to return to this board and, uh, and as Mr. Bridger indicated, put on testimony regarding any negative impacts that may or may not have occurred at the facility last summer, um, and barring, you know, any negative impacts and the board acknowledging and agreeing that there were none. Then, uh, then it would be granted or we would seek granting of this variance in perpetuity. So to address it, the way, the way I figured I would, uh, I would entertain the board this evening was exactly, and I think Mr. Bridger led me straight to it. We did have communication and, uh, and it was my yeah, I'll call it a misunderstanding. Um, I had intended, uh, that my office submit the, submit the email chain that we had with the governing body, um, and the representatives prior to this meeting. It was brought to my attention that that was not done, uh, until earlier today. So I did forward a copy, but nevertheless, I'm happy to enter it as an exhibit this evening, so the board has an opportunity. But the long and short of it is, um, we did make attempts, both, uh, my client and myself to work with. We reached out to Mayor Frida directly. Um, we reached out to the clerk at Mayor Frida's direction. Uh, and basically the response that we got was, was simply their, the zoning office and, uh, and the municipality has to, to, uh, to paraphrase, bigger fish to fry and this just wasn't going to be something they would take a look at um, over the course of, uh, of this year between the last hearing and now. It wasn't negative, uh, response per se. It wasn't positive. It was simply, uh, we're, we're not sure how this came to be and, uh, and we're not looking to, uh, to investigate it at this point. So with that, we would revert to the other condition of approval, which was barring getting that ordinance change returning here this evening in spring twenty twenty-five and that's what we're doing. So, Mr. Tenenbaum, I just want to clear the record and I'm happy to go through it in further detail, but we did, you know, quote unquote, satisfy those conditions. We used those best efforts. There were no less than, there were four communications between my client and, uh, and myself, um, with the municipality that ultimately did not lead to, uh, the municipality investigating or taking upon themselves to, uh, to pursue an ordinance change. So with that, um, what I'd like to do.
You're submitting that as an exhibit, Mr. Wine?
Yeah, so.
I think maybe that would be a good idea.
Sure.
Can I just ask a question, please? Of either, um, our attorney or the zoning officer? Have you, have, have you received any comments from the general public regarding this application?
Why, I have not, and I'm not so sure.
Either the application or the camp operation itself since last year.
Uh, no, I have not.
Okay, Karen, have you heard anything?
No.
Anything? Okay.
No.
Okay, please continue.
Sure, so, uh, so I'm happy to, uh, we can enter that correspondence into evidence. Um, I'm not sure if you'd like me to do that first or throughout the duration of the presentation. Um, Ms. Casey, do you have a preference?
Well, do you, can you share that on your screen now?
Absolutely.
And then we could just make that an exhibit and if the board wants to take a look at it, they can.
I'm going to try to share the correct screen.
Mm-hmm.
And not my banking info. Can everybody see? This is an email chain. Is that what's coming up for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so, so I'm going to start down at the first message that was sent um, back on June twenty-seventh, which was, uh, actually just, almost immediately after, um, last year's hearing. Uh, and this was sent by Ms. Handabode, who is our, um, operations expert who will present again this evening. Um, and I'll just, uh, Ms. Casey, maybe, maybe it's best if I just read it into the record while it's on.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
So Ms. Handabode wrote, and this was directed to Mayor Frida. Hi, Mr. Frida, I hope you're enjoying the summer season. What a welcome reprieve from winter, huh? I wanted to reach out to see if I may invite you to take a tour of our Stephen Kate's Camp Princeton location at Princeton Day School. Why, you may ask? Well, we hit a huge roadblock this year with opening our camp and I wanted to speak to, with you to see how we can help the city in the future. The roadblock, the city of Princeton, has a list of prohibited uses such as stockyards and quarries, trucking terminals and commercial summer camps. In order to get approved to operate our day camp, we needed to get zoning approval from the board for a Class D variance. While we were successful in obtaining their approval, they suggested that I slash we do our best effort to see why the law is in place and see if we can amend the law. The list of prohibited uses goes on to explain that while a commercial camp may be prohibited, that a tax-exempt or nonprofit camp is an appropriate use. Why might that be? Do you have any insight? I would be more than happy to set up a time to talk with you and would even be willing to fly out to Princeton to meet with you in person and give you a personalized tour of what we do, so that you can see that a commercial camp does not function differently from a nonprofit camp on its face. I appreciate your thoughts and guidance and I look forward to speaking with you soon. All the best. Just Handabode. So that was sent on June twenty-seventh to the mayor. The mayor responded that very same day saying, and again, if you can still see my screen, I'll see what I can find out as to why the zoning is set up like that and we can talk then. Thanks, Mark. The mayor then followed up, um, how many days in June? So four days later, on July first, um, to say, Jess, I talked to our zoning officer. That regulation has been on the books for a long time. I'm not personally aware of the exact reason why. We have a lot of zoning work going on right now. I'm not sure how high a priority this would be to address as far as changing this regulation right now. You could make a formal request to the town to change the zoning. A letter to our clerk copied here would be adequate for that, Mark. So that was sent, um, on July, which was midsummer. Um, this was forwarded to me, uh, and I note that there's no forwarding, uh, message here, but it was sent to me towards the end of the summer after, uh, operations had concluded. And so I took the mayor up on his offer and I emailed, uh, Ms. Harris, who is your clerk, um, on September nineteenth. And I wrote, and this is a long one, so bear with me. Good afternoon, Ms. Harris. My name is Ben Wine and I represent Stephen Kate's Camp that operated out of Princeton Day School this past summer. I understand that Jess Handabode was in touch with Mayor Frida and yourself a couple of months ago. And while we are only in September, Jess is already giving significant thought and effort to next summer, given the success of summer twenty twenty-four. For a bit of background, a commercial camp use that operates as a for-profit entity such as Stephen Kate's required a trip to the zoning board to obtain a use variance. Over the course of two hearings before the board, the use variance was granted unanimously by the board temporarily for summer twenty twenty-four. The board felt that they were seemingly comfortable with this particular camp operating at this particular site with the operations presented on record. However, they were not clear as to the basis for the for-profit camp prohibition in the municipality zoning ordinance and requested that prior to seeking a permanent use variance for future summers, we approach the municipality with a request to amend the ordinance and eliminate the restriction outright and also assess how camp operated this past summer. Attached is a copy of Resolution Z twenty-four dash four eighty-one memorialized by the zoning board for your review. I will direct your attention to paragraph twelve found on page six, which notes, and I quote, "The board further believes that it would be beneficial for the municipal governing body to review the zoning district standards with respect to distinction made between for-profit and nonprofit summer camps, and the applicant has agreed to use best efforts to request such a review." I have further attached a letter written by Princeton Day School and I can, uh, I can send that letter after as well. I can put that up. Speaking to the success of summer twenty twenty-four and their desire to see the partnership renewed in perpetuity. I also want to highlight some exciting statistics that were accomplished by Stephen Kate's presence in the municipality this summer. Four hundred and four individual campers served, two thousand six hundred and seven camper days provided, six campers and nineteen scholarship attendances provided and fourteen full-time summer jobs created. I'm respectfully requesting that the municipality look into whether a change in the zoning ordinance can be effectuated that would eliminate the distinction between for-profit and not-for-profit summer camps, thereby permitting camps like Stephen Kate's to operate within the municipality in permitted zoning districts with, without the need for use variance relief. I understand that serious thought goes into every provision of a municipal code and while at some point there may have been a rationale behind this decision, it seems as though this particular provision has little relevance today. Kindly confirm your receipt of my email and the attachments and please let me know if you're available for some time to speak in the next couple of weeks. Sincerely, and then I signed it. So that was sent September nineteenth. Having not heard back from the clerk, I followed up, uh, just under two weeks later, September thirtieth. Um, and I wrote, good morning, Ms. Harris. I hope you are well. I just wanted to check and confirm you received my prior email requesting that the municipality look into an amendment to the zoning ordinance to remove the restriction on commercial camps. Kindly confirm receipt and I would be happy to discuss further. Um, again, I copied, uh, the mayor as well to that and, uh, and I had not, I, I have not gotten a response since then. So that was at, uh, that was in September. Um, I will stop sharing so that I can see everybody, but I think, Ms. Casey, if you want to mark this, uh, correspondence as exhibit A one.
Yes.
We can do that. And then what I also, oh, how do I stop sharing? Okay. And then what I want to indicate, since that September thirtieth email and to date I have not received a response, that is when we began preparing the application materials, uh, for submission to the board to appear here today in, uh, spring of twenty twenty-five to, you know, what I'll say, take the alternative route towards operating a camp this summer, which is the permanent use variance route. We began, uh, undertaking the application. It was filed. Uh, there was an initial incompleteness letter issued by Mr. Bridger. Um, we unfortunately, the engineer of record, um, who previously worked on the application passed away and his partner got rather, rather sick. So ultimately, um, we did have to change engineers, which created a little bit of a delay. But, uh, long story short, um, after being deemed ultimately complete, we are here today now seeking the permanent use variance. So I hope that's not a lot to digest, but helps paint the picture.
Okay. Uh, board members, do you have any questions of the attorney just at this point? He's going to continue, I assume.
Yeah.
But regarding this, this, uh, effort that was requested, um, to try to resolve this without zoning board approval. Try to resolve this without zoning board approval.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, um. You know, clearly. He has taken the step that the board asked them to take. Um. I was surprised in the, and it's, it's not anyone's fault that. Um, the mayor didn't copy the director of planning. Who probably would have been. The person to speak to, in my opinion. Um, I know Justin was on earlier. Is he still here?
He is.
Yes, sir.
Justin will swear you in. We haven't sworn you in so far. Do you swear firm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, were you, were you aware of this, Justin, this? Particular?
No, uh, just now is when I first heard of this.
Okay. That that was really the. Only question I had to you, if you had anything to add, uh. You know, it was something that would. Particular with this zone. Um, but um, yeah. That's, that's my only question.
And and Mr. Floyd, to be clear, obviously, had uh, the mayor directed us in that direction, we would have copied Mr. Lesko on that email.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it is what it is. So in any case, that's the um. That's the genesis of why we're back here today. So uh, I hate to say I hoped not to have to see you again on this application, but um. Alas, here we are and and uh, and so ultimately what I'd like to do this evening. Is I do have four witnesses um, available this evening, and most of them are going to be, actually, all of them are going to be rather quick. Because ultimately what our charge was from the last meeting uh, just under a year ago. Was to really speak to the operations and whether there was neg- any negative impact. Um, we had the ability to re-review uh, the hearings um. From last year. And it, you know, what really stuck out, at least to our team, was that I think some hesitation from the board in making. The variance permanent at that time. Was perhaps a potential conflict between. The Stephen Kates camp, which is our applicant and the existing Princeton Day School nonprofit camp that operates simultaneously. On the site. So there was some concern about. How is this actually going to play out, which of course was an unknown until we had. The ability to uh, to operate summer twenty twenty four. And uh, and just generally, and as you can see in the wording of your own resolution and Mr. Bridger's letter, just were there any negative uh? Negative impacts as a result of uh, of our, of our camp operating. So. I'd like to call this evening um, our engineer Ralph Petrella, who, like I said, is was not the engineer that presented last year. Um, and I just would like him to reorient the board and remind the board specifically. Uh, to the location on the campus where Steve N. Kates did operate and would like to continue to operate in perpetuity. Then I would like to have our operations expert Jess Handabode, who you did hear from last year. Um, and she'll speak to, you know, some of the more specifics of how summer twenty twenty four went. Then I have Jacob Gleason. Who is the Princeton Day School Camp Director and Event Coordinator. And uh, and I, I think it would be helpful for him to speak from. Quote unquote, the other side or the landlord's side as to his interaction and how he believes that camp operated um. Symbiotically last year and and how it would work going forward. And then finally, I have uh, Thomas Ricky, who is our project planner. Um, you did hear from him last year as well. And I'd just like him to, at a high level, reiterate the planning points. Um, relative to converting this variance that was granted um, into a permanent variance. So Chairman, unless you have any further questions of me, I'm happy to jump straight into my first witness.
I I do have a question, if you don't mind, uh, Mr. Y. If we grant this permanent um, variance. Can you expand that camp or is it something that's going to be contained at the existing level?
It, that's a great question. We're going to go through that in the operations. The short answer is no. And and that's why the use variance route exists when you grant um, a use variance as a zoning board, and I'm sure you're aware. But it is specifically and explicitly tied to the testimony and the operations that are presented as part of that application. So what you're going to hear that, and I'll, I'll give a brief purview, uh, preview. The only change that we would be looking for in perpetuity as opposed to what was granted. Temporarily was a slight increase in number of campers based on. Last year's volume and what is in, what is uh, projected in perpetuity. What was approved was a hundred and fifty campers. What is proposed in perpetuity is two hundred and twenty, so just about a fifty percent increase in campers. And what that would do would mean if there's any. Number of campers that exceeds that two hundred and twenty. At any point, they would need to return to this board and seek further approval. Um, or an amended approval of the variance. That's the only change that is going to be sought, converting this into a permanent use variance. Everything else and the operations as they are. This cannot be converted, for example, into a sleepaway camp. This cannot be converted into, you know, additional number of uh, campers beyond what is testified to. The hours of operation cannot expand. Everything that you hear is what is granted, and anything beyond that would require an amended application.
Which you will provide testimony justifying the fifty percent increase.
Yes, we will. That's correct.
Thank you.
But I, I think to answer Mr. Stein's question, I, I, unless I'm off base, I think he was asking. Basically, what's to stop the camp from expanding beyond what is testified to? And the short answer to that is what is testified to is what the, just like last year, the resolution was clear as to the operations. So too going forward, um, it would become a zoning enforcement issue if those operations were not adhered to.
Okay, alright. Any other questions, George? No, that was the question. Good question.
I have a question. Um, Mr. Wine, when you talk about the number of campers, do you mean the number of campers on any? Given day?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let uh, Ms. Handabode speak to the specifics.
Okay, because your, your email thread talked about over four hundred campers.
Right, so I'm gonna let her again speak to exactly how that operates um, and exactly what that means by a hundred and fifty or two hundred and twenty campers.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I'll uh, I'll call my first witness Ralph Petrella, who I did see a moment ago. There it is. Alright, Ms. Casey, would you like to swear?
I will. Yes, Mr. Petrella, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ralph, if you could give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background and the status of your license as an engineer in the state.
Uh, sure. I graduated from Jexel University in nineteen ninety five with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I am a New Jersey professional engineer licensed. Uh, my license is up to date and current. I have been practicing civil engineering. It'll be thirty years come September of this year. I have testified in front of Princeton Planning Board as well as multiple other planning boards. Uh, throughout the site. And and most of you would recognize the firm as Vanard Harvey, which is now Panoni Associates as of January twenty twenty three.
Well, we'll accept you as a, as an expert, as we will confirm.
Thank you, Chairman. So Ralph, I know there's no site improvements proposed, and this plan is gonna, you know, look fairly identical to what was presented at the original hearing. But if you can nevertheless bring up the plan and orient the board to, you know, the site and then the area of the site that is being discussed.
Sure, one second. Hopefully, everyone can see my screen.
Yes.
Uh, so this is uh, sheet CE one, which is the overall site plan, which you received as part of the submission. This shows the entire property of Princeton Day School, which is block thirty five oh one. Lots one point zero one, two point zero one, eleven and twelve. Uh, in relation to the overall site, the uh, Stephen Kates camp is located in the southern area of the site. Switching to the next plan, which is the site plan CE two, again, part of the package that you received. Uh, you can see here, coming in off of Great Road, it shows the circulation for drop off and pickup. Coming in. And it uh, actually highlights the two portions of the existing school as to where the camp uh, currently exists.
Okay, and Ralph, I, I silly question, but you know, other than you identifying on the plans where Stephen camps. Uh, Steve N. Kate's camp operates, there are no proposed changes to the facilities. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are no proposed site improvements.
Okay, so Chairman, I don't really have anything further for Mr. Petrella. I just thought it would be helpful to again remind the board where the area is that the camp is located.
Wine, do you want this to be an exhibit? Uh, since looks like. Mr. Petrella prepared something. As you say, it may be identical, but since he's got his uh.
I mean, I believe it was submitted at least ten days in advance of this meeting, but if you'd like for it to be marked as an exhibit to be safe, we can, we can do that. That's.
Okay. Why don't we do that? So we'll make that Exhibit A two.
Sure.
Board members, let's hold questions until witnesses are. Complete, witnesses are done testifying, and we can ask them one once.
Okay, perfect.
Please continue.
So with that, Chairman, my next witness would be Jess Handabode.
Ms. Handabode, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? Are you?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, yes.
Oh, okay, yes, I do. Sorry. I had a, a change of locations. I'm sorry, everyone. They kicked me out of where I was, so here I am.
Okay, so Jess, um, I know you testified last year, um, but if you can remind the board what your role is with Stephen Kates.
I am the licensing and permitting manager. For Stephen Kate's camp.
Okay, and that um, requires you to oversee, you know, the legality and the overall general camp operation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so Chairman, unless you have any concerns with us proceeding again with Ms. Handabode, um. You know, she is the one who testified last year to the operations. Um, unless you have any issues, I'd like for her to speak. Uh, thank you, Chair. So then Jess, can you? You know, give the board a little bit of a background as to how camp operated in summer twenty twenty four. And um, and discuss any, were there any negative uh, impacts associated with the camp at the site? Um, any concerns, any issues, and if you can talk about them?
Yeah, um. There were no any, nothing remarkable that would have gone, that went wrong. Um, that was or could be perceived as negative. Um, from our perspective in terms of customer scores and reports, um, it was generally positive. Um, we had um. A good number of campers, as Donna saw, that we had over four hundred. Different campers attend. That does not mean four hundred per day. We stuck to around eighty kids on average per day. Um, some weeks we had sixty and some weeks we hit it up to to seventy-five. Um, so we um, ended up seeing what we call is an attendance overall. So as Ben said, there were over four hundred campers that attended. Um, again, that's not on a daily basis, that's throughout the whole summer. Um, we have some really great numbers that I'd like to share with you guys if you, if you don't mind. Um, I don't know if you guys remember specifically last year when I told you guys about some of the more. Um, charitable things that we do in our communities. Um, but one of those things is called backup care through Bright Horizons. And that is a childcare service that HR. Kind of departments of companies can go ahead and partner with Bright Horizons to receive backup care benefits. So. Um, someone's school is randomly closed for a plumbing issue. They could reach out to backup care and they can get um. A service at a center or at a camp. They can find a place for their child to go for that day that they need while they're working. Um, that's a really big draw, and this location actually had more backup care days. Than any other location at Stephen Kate's camp. We had two hundred. Uh, or two thousand three hundred and twenty-two days used, which means that. Most of the campers who attended were actually attending via backup care. Um, which is really exciting. Um, we had sixty-eight different backup care clients. Some of those include Princeton University, the Bank of America. Um, there was another large one. Pfizer was a big one. Um, those clients, uh, those people who work for that company were able to use backup care when they needed it. Um, there was also a program that I introduced last year when I was speaking to you guys called Oz Days. And those are literally just scholarship days that we give out to the local community because we find. A camper who wants to attend camp, who maybe, maybe wasn't able to afford it due to um, family economic status. We had eighty-six of those days, so we had eighty-six days given out to the local community. And the final number that I think is actually really exciting to share with you guys. Is that ninety-eight percent of our campers that attended camp in Princeton are actually from Princeton. They weren't from the neighboring communities. We had a few, obviously, two percent of those campers were coming from nearby towns. However, ninety-eight percent were actually coming from the city of Princeton, which I think is very exciting.
Thank you, Jess, and I know that was one, I, I, let's see how good my memory is. I think it was Mr. Floyd who brought it up last year. And asked that question based on zip code. Do we know? How many signups are are going to be specifically served from uh, from the municipality of Princeton? And uh, and I'm glad you were able to give that uh, that answer tonight. Um, for last year. So one, a couple other questions for you, Jess. So obviously, based on the temporary variance granted last year. Um, you know, we were granted for up to a hundred and fifty days and. To answer Ms. Donna's question, I think, I think she'll tell me if you, if you didn't answer it, but I, I think you made it clear. That at no point, it wasn't four hundred campers at a given time. It was just there were four hundred different campers. Served over the course of the summer.
That's correct.
With with an allowance last year of up to a hundred and fifty. So one of the things that we're seeking here for our permanent variance. So that we wouldn't have to come back, you know, a year from now, two years from now, based on your projections. Is an increase to two hundred and twenty, from a hundred and fifty to two twenty as a maximum onsite. At any given day on your busiest day. So can you talk to the board a little bit how you arrived at that number? And how you feel that that is supported at this site?
Yeah, that number really came from what we're seeing in terms of registrations right now for this coming summer. So this site is seeing a growth that we haven't seen. At other sites um, in the last few years, which is really exciting for us. So. Um, we're seeing a lot of registrations come through, a lot of parents who are really excited about it. And um, so what we're hoping to do is to grow this site to what we call a large site. Um, which is about two hundred to two hundred and twenty kids. Um, large because it seems like the community um, needs the care and and really wants the care um, that we're providing.
Okay, and in terms of um, you know, concerns with raising that number, do you, do you? Have any reason to think that the capacity um, cannot be handled at this site without expanding your actual facilities on the site?
No, so what is in our lease agreement with um, Princeton Day School? Is two buildings that are right next to each other with a large field in front. Um, this last summer, we didn't occupy every classroom that we actually paid for in the lease. So we do that so that we can expand without changing a lease agreement, without changing a zoning ordinance. Without changing any sort of capacity concern, it would just be adding classrooms and. And moving activities around to make it more sense for uh, increasing campers.
Okay, and I think last year you said that you have a, this, the state has a one. Staff member to fifteen camper ratio um, requirement. So up to the two twenty, that that equates to, I think, based on a hundred and fifty, I think you said that's about, I think you had about eleven or twelve staff members. Um, that ratio would be maintained, so it would increase the staff by, you know, approximately four or five more staff members in perpetuity. Is that right?
And I actually am going to correct you if you don't mind. It's actually um, a ratio of seven to one if a camper is five and under. And ten to one if a camper is over five. Um, so we're going to increase the amount of staff members, you know, tenfold, so.
You, you mean commensurately with the, with the?
Yeah.
Increase?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, not, not ten times the number.
No, not ten times.
Yeah, I, I got you. Okay.
You know what I'm saying.
Alright, um, and then in terms of all the other operations you testified to previously, the deliveries, the hours of operation, the site security, um, trash and recycling. Um, you're not proposing any changes to what was put on the record in perpetuity. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so in other words, the way the camp operated this past summer that you just testified to had no issues. No complaints, no anything. Um, you are not changing any of those operations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and you do understand, and I think it's important you hear this, because it was from a board member's question. That if any of those operations were to substantively change. Or any increase in the camper body beyond what you've testified to. We would need to be back before this board, whether it's next year, in two years, in ten years. Um, to seek relief uh, and put those operations on the record. You understand that?
Yes, I understand. Yes, I understand.
Okay. I think Chairman, I think unless you wanted to go through any of those specifics that were testified to last year as well, I think that really concludes my examination of Ms. Handabode.
Yeah, I don't have any, I do, well, actually I do have one question, but I, I I'll hold that until we hear the rest of the witnesses.
Okay.
So please continue.
Sure. So my next witness is Jacob Gleason, who I saw him in the waiting room, I think. In the attendee list. He's raised his hand.
What did you see him?
Do you see him now?
I can see his.
Good evening.
Somebody, okay.
All right, hi Jacob. Ms. Casey's going to get you sworn in.
Yeah, good.
Mr. Gleason, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Jacob, can you please explain to the board who you are and what your role is with Princeton Day School?
Yes, I am the Summer Programs Manager and Event Coordinator, so I oversee all of our summer different programs as well as any events and special things going on on campus.
Okay, and that would include operations of this exact, this facility over the summer months when Stephen Kates is occupying the facility?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and you also oversee the Princeton Day School camp as the camp director for them, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. So Chairman, I'd like, if it's okay with you, for Mr. Gleason to explain to the board from his perspective, you've just heard what Ms. Handabode testified to, but specifically regarding that relationship between Stephen Kates and the Princeton Day School. Thank you.
Great.
Jacob, go right ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. So our partnership with Stephen Kate has been pretty flawless through this entire process. They really allow a different demographic of camper to attend. That PDS doesn't, they offer more of a traditional format with opportunities that we don't offer in our more so auxiliary specialty camp format. So like I said, it brings in this entire new demographic of people who might not otherwise have that opportunity to be on our campus. So we do run in conjunction with each other very smoothly. As I said, it's two very different operations with little to no crossover. So I think in terms of an operational standpoint, it's as smooth as could be. From a facility standpoint, I do think it's a benefit for us as it does keep a lot of our staff in the building year round rather than just during the school hours. Again, there's no real crossover, so it doesn't cause any issues to our facility. But that traffic, I do see it as a good thing. And then more so on our facility with the operations, like I said, all those different people being on campus, it's a positive not only for the camps, but also for the school as a whole. You know, that free, having people getting eyes on our campus on what we do is more than just a summer program, but as a school in general is obviously a good thing on our end. So all in all, I do think it's a really positive partnership, something that benefits both ends in a year round standpoint, not just a summer standpoint.
Thanks, Jacob. And then in terms of actual relationship onsite, you know, during the camp hours, you're not aware of any concerns regarding, for example, campers getting mixed up between the two camps or, or, you know, staff accidentally meandering somewhere else or anything like that, is that right?
Absolutely, yes. Signage couldn't be more clear on our campus, but as I said, the communication from Stephen Kate to their families as well as our communications crystal clear and up to this point, there's been no issues.
Okay, and one of the things that was testified to by Ms. Handabode last year, which I just want to confirm as an effect, was that there would be a constant flow of communication between the two camps as needed. So, you know, if there was an emergency on site or anything like that, and, and you can confirm that that is absolutely still in the cards, correct?
Yes, absolutely. That team's been great.
Okay, Chairman, I have nothing further for Mr. Gleason.
Okay.
I have some. I have a question for Mr. Gleason if I may.
Well, we're going to wait and.
Oh, we're going to wait till the end, okay, sorry.
Wait till the end, yeah. Okay, Mr. Wine, what's next?
Sure. So my last and final witness, I recognize it's 10:30, is Thomas Ricci, who is our project planner.
Good evening.
Dr. Ricci, do I swear you in? Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
TJ, if you can please give the board the benefit of your credentials and the status of your license in New Jersey.
Yeah, be happy to. For the record, Thomas Ricci, last name spelled R I C C I, I'm with Stonefield Engineering and Design. I was the planner that gave testimony at the first hearing. I'm licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, nationally certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've been accepted before over 100 land use boards, including this one. My licenses are active and in good standing.
We'll accept you in the next one.
Thank you, Chair. So TJ, you know, high level, but I think it's important to just remind and reorient the board to the D1 use variance and the relief that is being sought that you testified to last year. And as well, if you can also tie in the operational testimony that I guess we have this benefit, which is non-traditional of a use variance application where we have proof of concept, and if you can weave that into your testimony as well.
Yeah, be happy to. So we are obviously seeking the D1 use variance, and just to remind the board, we argued this under the MDDG standard last time. And what that requires us to show is site suitability, why this particular site is suitable for the proposed use. Now, if you remember, there was two reasons. Number one was that the site is already developed as a school. It's, it's perfect for a camp. You have the pickup and drop offs, you have the school buildings, you have the rest of the school recreational facilities, you have pathways. I mean, the whole design of the site was designed with children in mind. So that's why it's very attractive for Stephen Kate's camp because it's already a school. So I think that serves purpose A, general welfare. Childcare obviously is very needed in this area and many areas that I, I've worked in. So I think that that is a big benefit to the community of reutilizing this site. Now, the second reason for site suitability is that because it does operate as a school, it's actually empty for the time that they need it as a camp. So the perfect opposite schedules make this very, very efficient resource. And by resource, I mean the land. The planners are always looking to utilize land and, land and resources in a town in the most efficient way. But what the camp does is it has the ability to come in, utilize the facilities and the resources that already exist on this property for a need in the community when the school doesn't. So it's, it's really the perfect, perfect use of that land, which is one of the purposes of the MITSA Plan Use Law, which is Purpose M. So that's, that, that really is the positive aspects or the positive criteria of this application. Now, as we move to the potential impacts or the potential negatives, one of the board's conditions was to petition the council and the mayor on maybe some insight on the zoning and why it was in the code and if it could be changed. The applicant had obviously made their best effort to do that. The real reason is the board didn't know why, I, I know we talked about why do we think that this provision in the code exists? The board didn't seem to know, the mayor didn't seem to know, and personally, I didn't seem to know. I think that's important when we think about the negative criteria and we think about the impacts of why this code is in place. In my opinion, if there was a substantial negative impact for allowing this use, I think it would be right out in front of us. It'd be very, very evident in our deliberations and in our discussions. And I just, I just can't find what that substantial impact or that negative impact would be. Now, the second piece of this, and I think this was, this was a condition of the board, was to grant the temporary use variance and then come back and ask, how did it go? I think that is an additional safety net that further solidifies the no substantial impact component of the grant of the use variance. The board had asked us, you know, do it for a summer, see how operations work, see how it works in conjunction with the Princeton Day School, come back and tell us about it. Princeton Day School said no issues, Stephen Kate's no issues, it worked flawlessly, they're partners, symbiotic relationship that we have here. You don't typically do that for variances. We have to anticipate what we think the potential impacts are going to be. This, this is great. This is, we've, we have proof of concept here. So that further solidifies my opinion that I don't foresee any substantial impacts with the grant of the permanent use variance. I know it was just talked about, just circling back on the ordinance about, you know, why shouldn't this go to council and do an ordinance revision? And what I've seen in my experience is sometimes council doesn't want to look at, or sometimes applications are done on a case by case basis. Variances are approved, use variances in particular with a specific set of operations tied to them. And what the board's purview is, is to impose reasonable conditions on a specific set of operations or a specific set of use. So if council, it's likely that if you adopt an ordinance that says something is allowed, then it becomes uncontrolled. You have no control over the specific set of operations. So what I think probably happened here was they wanted to send this use, as they do with other uses, to the board so they can review it, because that's what the board does, review it on a case by case basis, hopefully arrive to the conclusion that no substantial impact, and if there are impacts, impose reasonable conditions on it. Which I think is exactly, that is the exercise of the zoning board of adjustment. I think that's the exercise that we've seen play out here. Based on my discussions with Ms. Handabode, it operated flawlessly as we anticipated. I, I, I don't see any substantial impact. From a land use planning standpoint, it's a perfect setup for them. From a general welfare and public and community standpoint, childcare i- is important during the summer months. It's important to the kids, it's important to the families that need to be working. I see this as, as a win-win for everybody. And, and that concludes my testimony. Happy to take any questions.
TJ, my, my only question, just to follow up with you, because I, I heard you mention the words need in community probably six or seven times. Does the fact that, as you heard Ms. Handabode testify to, 98% of the campers were from the municipality of Princeton, does that at all play into, you know, the particular site suitability for this use with this set of operations at this site?
Yeah, I definitely think it does. We're, we're serving the kids right in this area that probably live, you know, close to the site. So I definitely think the, the proximity of, of where the children live in the site itself is, is definitely, is definitely tied to the site suitability aspect.
Thank you. Chairman, I have nothing further for this witness.
Thank you. Continue.
That would conclude my direct presentation, and I would respectfully request the right to sum up and respond to any questions.
Sure. Okay, board members, question time. I think Harlan, you had a question?
I had a question for, I think it was Mr. Gleason.
Go ahead.
Is Mr. Gleason still available?
Yep.
On the screen.
So, Mr. Gleason, PDS is tax exempt, correct? So PDS doesn't pay property taxes or taxes?
I will honestly say that I'm not the person to speak to that, but.
Okay, not a problem. Stephen Kates pays PDS to use the facilities, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Tenenbaum, I think I see where you're going and I can, on the legal side, I can try to answer that question if you're okay with it.
Please.
Yeah, so they are, PDS is a 501(c)(3) tax exempt entity, that is correct. But that does not absolve them of property taxes. I am not a tax attorney. I don't know how, how it's fleshed out, but if you go look at the tax records, you can see, and I think we talked about this last year as well. They do, there, there are quite a substantial amount of property taxes associated with the property. My best guess is that as a nonprofit entity, they are reduced from what they would otherwise be for, you know, approximately 90 acres of developed land. But it does not mean that they do not pay property taxes.
Okay. I think, I, I don't know for sure, but I think this was discussed last year. I think it might have been.
It's also in the material that we got in this, from Stone.
Stonefield, that's Mr. Ricci's firm.
Hey, John, I don't see if the pages are numbered, but it's, I mean, the, the amount is $1,129,803 in 2023 in property taxes.
And do we?
Section D1, Use Variance Relief Justification, number one under site sustainability criteria.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. The other question that I had was about the, we went, if I understand correctly from the presentation, we went from having 60 to 75 campers on a given day onsite. We had, the board had given approval for up to 150, and now the request is 220. That seems like a pretty sizable jump, and I, I understood the witness to say that there were a bunch of sort of advanced enrollment? And I was hoping she could speak to that because that's, that's a pretty significant jump.
Yeah, I definitely can. So I want to make sure that I, I'm, I'm clear when I describe this. So typically, a first year of a summer camp, we see about 40 to 50 kids. This site was a slightly larger at an average of 60 to 75, like I, like I said. And then each year, we see that our enrollment goes up. And so it wouldn't go up by, you know, upwards of close to 200 to 220. What would happen is we would likely see a 20 to 25% increase this next year. The year after that, maybe a 10% increase, the year after that, another 10, so on and so forth. We don't typically see huge jumps like 75 to 220, but we could see 75 to 110, 115 maybe. And then the following year from 115 to 145. Again, the following year, another 20, 30, 40 kids on average. The 220 number that we were throwing out there was, like I said, my, the VP of our company, who, who's in charge of kind of all of our projections for how many kids are going to be onsite at a camp. He's really hoping and guessing that this site is going to become a large site for us, which is where the 220 came from. And he's thinking about that in a, in a three, four, five year span.
Okay. And, and Mr. Gleason, I understood you to say that the two buildings that were being used by Stephen Kates were kind of right next door to each other. Is there capacity for that large of a number within those two buildings, or is there another one nearby? And what, what is the, what is the provision for that?
As she actually stated in her earlier part, they do have space in the current occupied buildings that they haven't even used. So with that increase, they'll, they'd be more than okay.
Okay.
Just to, to color that a little bit more, this last summer, we actually used only four out of the classrooms that we lease out, and we actually lease out 10. So we've got plenty of room to, to go ahead and expand.
Thank you.
And good question, Harlan. I was going to ask the same thing. Okay, any other questions, board members? Yes, Michael?
You know, I think this is a good, good report. We got information that, you know, we had requested, which is really good. And no major problems. You did mention on your customer scores, it was generally positive with some negative. Could you expound on the negative since we were worried about that?
For sure. The negatives that we saw were very typical of most of our camps. So my child didn't get enough pizza for lunch. My child didn't know where to get snack. My child wanted to do sewing, but there were no sewing machines available. So it's, it's some of the typical things that we see for most of our campsites. Nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay. Thank you. I think one, a couple additional comments I'd like to make. You know, it was mentioned early on, and it was sort of representations of the board. That it was approved unanimously last year. It, we were really painted into the corner, at least some of us.
We were.
Because of the timeframe, the application was so late, and you already had people signed up. That is how you got unanimous. Um, I think also the representation on why the board sent it to the governing body was related to the use variance. And basically only that, because the code clearly stated that a nonprofit was not a use for this zone. That was it. Um, it, it wasn't like a side yard variance. How close is too close? Um, question I had regarding, it sounds like PDS rents you square footage, whether it's interior and exterior. But does, does PDS, and maybe this question is for Mr. Gleason, put any number limit as far as campers at all?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all my comments, questions.
Board members, any other questions? Yes.
Yes, I'd like to sort of drill down on the impact of the expansion on the infrastructure, which is to say, if it was at max two twenty, um and the other day camp is operating, does that exceed the school year um enrollment of PDS?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So our enrollment um is just under one thousand students. So even with both of our camps in conjunction, we don't even reach half of that. So um in terms of that, we are completely good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Um, I, I, I think for um Mr. Bridger, um, I understand that, you know, the issue is for-profit camps not allowed in this particular zone. Are for-profit camps allowed in other zones or in no zones in Princeton?
Uh, they're not allowed in any other zones. Um, they're not allowed in any zones in Princeton.
Okay. Thanks.
And if I could tack on to that, sorry, this is Justin here. Um, there are other uses that only nonprofits are allowed as well in both the former borough and the former township, you know, uh First Aid Society, schools in general. Um, I think even like a private uh or a, a swim club type thing. Um, so that's not necessarily uncommon in the former, uh the code of the former township or of the former borough.
Thanks. Okay, um, anyone?
I have a question. Um, I just want to clarify the numbers. I forget your number and the number of camper days and the number of camper days that were emergency care, but it seemed like most of the days were emergency care. Do I have that wrong?
No, you have that right. We had a very, very, very high percentage of backup care clients who used our facility in Princeton. You are correct in that.
But they must have been using it every single day they were there.
Yeah, so some, so some um employers give thirty days a year, some employers give twenty. It depends on what their HR department has deemed um part of their benefits package for their employees.
Okay, does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Michael.
Yeah, um, I have a question for Justin. Uh, you know, he just pointed out there's other types of uses that have a, you know, nonprofit owner only type thing. Have you had, or are you or Derek aware of that coming up on a, a variance, use variance request? And if so, is there any pattern on, I realize we have to deal with case by case, but.
Not in the nearly five years I've been here. Uh, we've had a few conversations with schools that want it, for-profit schools that were interested in Princeton, uh and we had to let them know the process. Uh, we've not seen them come to the board.
And I don't have any uh experience with it in my nearly twenty plus years here, so.
Okay. That's.
Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I had a few comments and a few questions.
Okay.
It's Justin.
Justin, please.
Now a good time. Uh, well, first on the tax question, um I just wanted to clarify that Princeton Day School is the owner of several properties. So it's very possible that they're taxed on certain ones, like single-family homes, uh but not on the school building itself. So both things can kind of be true. Um, secondly, I, I do want to kind of respectfully disagree with Mr. Ricky on the point of the zoning board application before, you know, zoning board applications in general. Um, you know, I, I think the planning board is really known as the board of yes, when the use is allowed. Um, but the board can still put conditions on, on those applications. Uh, but furthermore, the conditional use uh classification is really the way that the governing body can, can further control uh applications and, and impacts that they might have on neighbors. Um, and interestingly, uh, uh, not-for-profit camps are a conditional use in certain zones of the former township. Now, it's very limited, um but they are allowed. Um, that would not necessarily, you know, this camp would still be in the same boat uh because of its for-profit status. Um, but that is uh one way in which the governing body controls uh types of use and, and the ability to have conditions on them. Um, and I, I did just have a few questions. Um, first, about that ninety-eight percent number, um I don't want to be nitpicky on this, but I know it came up last time, and I know it comes up all the time when I get calls from people in different towns that say, no, this is a Princeton address, but it's not in the municipality of Princeton. Um, are those based on a zip code or on what exactly?
Yeah, they're based on zip codes. So when the, when the campers' uh parents or guardians register, um we obviously have to ask them zillions of questions, as you can imagine. Um, one of which is their, their home address. Um, and so that was based on uh zip codes. And so.
Okay.
Four zip, zip codes that I was given there, and they're based on what I saw on all of the stuff. Looks like they're in uh what I thought was the city of Princeton. Maybe I'm confused about what those boundaries.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't mean this to be a gotcha by any means, but uh just for the board to be aware, uh, the O eight five four O zip code goes to at least six other municipalities uh with a population, I believe, about forty thousand. Um, and that's not including both of ours. So it's about probably over a third larger than our municipality. Um, and I, I just had another question for Miss Handabode. Uh, have you, i- is there a reason you operate out of Princeton Day School? Or, or could this camp operate out of the other schools in Princeton?
Um, the, the reason was is just because of the relationship that we, that we structured with the school um a couple of years ago when we started kind of our initial conversations with them. Um, we do all of our, you know, demographic research, and um we work closely with the Bright Horizons real estate team on where they have large um sectors of backup care clients. Um, and so they give us zip codes that they want us to hit in order to meet those, those numbers of backup care clients. Um, so we got that zip code and started looking at the schools within that area.
Understood, thank you. Um, and then I just have a question for Mr. Gleason, if he's still around.
He, he's, yeah, here he is.
Sorry about that, yes.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, so you've mentioned the operations of the Princeton Day School operated uh camps there. Is there a specific reason why uh, you know, we wouldn't be here tonight if Princeton Day School were to just operate for two hundred and twenty more students? Um, is there a specific reason why Princeton Day School has not gone that route?
Yeah, I would say it's just the model of camp, right? Um, and for a lack of a better word, trying not to bite off more than we can chew. Um, I think our main goal is to have this auxiliary and specialty camp um to give those campers that opportunity to try something specific for an entire week rather than your traditional camp of bouncing around doing different things. Um, so what Stephen Kate brings is that offering that, um like I just said, if we were to, I'm not sure we could handle it as well as we handle what we already do. So they kind of bring in what we don't have and operate it rather than with us, they operate it on their own.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay, board members. Okay, I have one question. Um, Mr. Gleason, the total number of campers on any given day, both Princeton Day Schools camp and the Stephen Kates camp is roughly what?
Our, so ours is relatively the same as theirs between one hundred and fifty and two hundred. Um, is what we do. So their number being that goal would be about the same. As um mentioned, it's not, their numbers don't reach that. Ours stay pretty consistent between one hundred and fifty and two hundred.
Okay, so there could be a couple of hundred kids on the grounds that day.
Yeah, correct.
Security.
Um, so we have a full-time security staff on campus at all times during operations. Um, and that team kind of mans the entire property.
Okay, and they, there, how many of security people do you have?
I honestly, I couldn't give you an exact number of what's on our team, but I know that we have at least three on, two or three on any given time.
Okay. Thank you. And just one last question. During the normal school year, how many security do people do you have on site?
I believe that number stays the exact same.
So you have a higher number of students on a full-time basis than you do in the summer, but your security says the same.
That is a good question, and I would like to defer as I'm not, as the camp director, I'm not entirely sure of how they're scheduling and all of that works. So I don't want to give any misinformation, um but yeah.
It seems like your security would be adequate based on what you're doing with full-time school.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, that was it. Okay, um, any other questions of the applicant, the attorney, the engineer, the, anybody?
Yeah, I'll just follow up on what, what you were asking about security to the health issue. Do you have nurses on station?
Yes, we do. We have our full-time school nurse uh works throughout the summer as well.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. So at this point.
I just had one question for Mr. Wine. Um, Mr. Wine, you in coming now today for the permanent variance, you're of course relying on the testimony that was presented uh at your last appearance, correct, as supplemented tonight?
As supplemented, that's correct, yes.
Okay.
And as I think I said, I'm happy to have any of the witnesses speak in more detail. I just, I didn't want to take, I didn't want to, you know, take more of the board's time than they felt necessary. But um to the extent that there was something they forgot or would like further fleshed out from last hearing, I'm happy to do that.
Oh, I understand. And in fact, uh, all the board members have, even those who are not in attendance, that your pre- previous hearings did listen to the tapes of that. So they are familiar with the prior testimony. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions? Okay, so at this point, um, Mr. Wise, you can sum up, and then we will open it up to the public for comment. If there is anyone in the public who would like to comment.
Sure. So Chair, and I'll, you know, I'll, I'll definitely answer any further questions or comments the board has. But um, you know, generally speaking, I think last year and uh I, I, I think we were given the opportunity to do something a little bit unique. And, you know, while Mr. Floyd, Mr. Floyd was a hundred percent correct in that it was June time, we, we were in a bit of a crunch. Um, we're still in a crunch now, you know, it's still close to the summer. But, you know, that may have played a part in, you know, the board kind of okaying it. But if, if the board recalls, um, we had made the suggestion of making it a temporary variance last year with the intent of coming back. I think, I think actually the resolution reflects that we made that suggestion to then come back with the proof of concept to prove that this site is particularly suited for this use and that we can meet the positive and negative criteria, and specifically that there were no negative impacts associated with the application. Now, one of the other components to that was to try and take a look at, can we delve deeper into this issue of for-profit, not-for-profit? It came up at length at the last meeting. It came up here again at length. Um, specifically, I think it's safe to say, nobody really knows why that was in effect. Um, I tried to work with the mayor. I tried to work with the clerk. The mayor acknowledged freely that, you know, he was not really sure why that uh, why that ordinance reads as it does. Um, you know, had I, had I been directed to speak to somebody else, I would have gone that route as well. Uh, we did try, and, and we would have liked, as I said in my opening, nothing more than to have had an ordinance change, whether it was calibrated to this particular zone or calibrated to this type of for-profit use. That would have been great because we would have been able to simply forego coming back to this board to seek that op, to, to seek that permanent approval. But I think the board did the right thing last time in baking in uh, well, if not that, then what scenario? And that's what we've done. We, we could not get where we wanted to go with the governing body. So we're back here seeking that permanent use variance and doing so based on data, actual evidence and data from how this camp operated. I think it was um one of the board members this evening asked Mr. Bridger, asked Miss Casey, did they hear any, any concerns from the camp operation last summer from the public? And the response from both was no. Um, the site is, you know, a significant amount of acreage. And what we're proposing to utilize is exactly the same amount of square footage that was planned for last year that was not even fully realized because uh, because the camper count did not get to where it was projected. But we're not proposing to expand the facilities in any capacity. We are seeking as part of the permanent variance, the ability to expand up to two hundred and twenty students. Um, if that's a concern for any board member, despite the testimony, we're happy to talk about that as well. But I think that, you know, hearing, especially when you spoke to Mr. Gleason, that the, the student body during your typical school day is just shy of a thousand students, and obviously the ancillary staff that goes with that. And between the two camps, with our outside number of two twenty, we'd be looking at about four hundred and twenty campers, which is, which is less than half of uh, of a typical school day. So I think when all things considered, you heard the testimony a year ago regarding the particular site suitability. You heard it again tonight, but you also heard that the site is particularly suited because it, it worked in summer two thousand and twenty-four. You also heard about the positive criteria and promotion of the purposes of the land use law. I don't think anything changes between last year and this year with respect to the purposes of the land use law. But I think hearing that a substantial number of campers um come locally and that the camp experience offered by Stephen Kates is not contradictory of what's offered by Princeton Day School. It supplements it. So I think that that really speaks to the general welfare, as you heard Mr. Ritchie testify to, regarding the Stephen Kates operation, despite the fact that it is a for-profit operation. You would not know that driving by. It doesn't appear any different um from any of the, from a nonprofit uh organization. I, I, I struggle to even think how that might be visually appreciated, but it's, it's not. It is simply a camp experience offered side by side with a different camp experience at the facility um at the Princeton Day School. Lastly, I would just say, and again, I'll happily respond to any comments or questions, but this is a use that allows kids to continue their growth mostly recreationally, but you heard testimony last year academically, certainly socially as well in that roughly two-month period between school. And I think that that's something that to allow Princeton in the municipality to expand its presence for its students and for its kids is, is just a great feature. I mean, the, the hundred and fifty kids or going up to two hundred and twenty kids that come to this facility would otherwise go to a different camp facility somewhere else. And I think to be able to house them locally in Princeton is a benefit to your municipality. Um, lastly, just to touch on really the fact that it give, you know, being a use variance gives this board oversight. I really want to double down and remind the board that what you're approving hopefully here this evening is specifically calibrated to the operations that have been presented. This is not going to change any of the operations that, how the camp operated this past summer, with the exception that. with the exception that in perpetuity, we're seeking the ability to expand within the confines of the physical space up to um, two hundred and twenty campers as a max. If that gets exceeded, we would be right back before this board. If there's any type of condition or look back that this board would like to place on an increase in campers beyond the hundred and fifty that was previously approved, we're also open to entertaining that. Ultimately, this is just an opportunity for the kids who utilize the Stephen Kate camp infrastructure and love to do so locally to be able to continue doing so. So with that, Chairman and members of the board, I know that was long-winded, but I would re, I, I, I hope that the board can see and appreciate the value that this product brings to this site and to the municipality of Princeton. And I would respectfully request that the board grant the application as presented.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, first of all, just a housekeeping issue. It is eleven oh two. From a statutory standpoint, we can quit at eleven. I think we're probably, in my opinion, I think we're far enough along and uh, that we should see this to the end. But board members, any discussion of that? Okay, so let's continue on. Alright, so at this point, um, we'll open the hearing up to the public. If there's anyone in the public who'd like to speak, we have to indicate that by raising your hands on the bottom of the screen. Um, Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
There are no hands.
Okay, um, alright, so we'll close the public portion of the hearing once again. Mr. Wise, you can sum up again.
Well, um, I, that wasn't a script, so I'm not going to attempt to, to repeat it. But I'll, I'll just, again, I'll just ask the board to, to really see the value, and I thank you very much for your time between last year and this year. And uh, and again, if there's any concerns or comments, we're, we're really happy to address them. Um, we just look forward to hopefully continuing our presence in Princeton with this operation.
Okay, thank you. Alright, board members, we're going to go into executive session. Are there questions, comments, discussion points, motion?
I have a question. Um, the, I gather you, um, Mr. Wine or anyone on the staff of the camp, you um, you employ counselors, camp counselors. Do you bring in your own people? Do you hire from the local area? What do you do?
Yeah, we hire all locally. So um, I know some, some camps kind of hire international staff and, and bring them in. We, we don't. Um, we hire everyone from the, the local community.
And what are the ages generally of the counselors?
So in the state of New Jersey, they're um, able to be as um, young as sixteen. Um, and as old as, you know, whatever. Um, average last year was probably twenty-one, twenty-two. We, we tend to hover around the, the early twenties.
Okay, thanks.
You have a comments, board members?
I, I, first of all, I'd like to compliment uh, Mr. Wine on what I thought was an excellent presentation tonight. I, I think he did a really very, very impressive job. Um, I'm okay with the granting of the expansion to two hundred and twenty students. I'm not okay with granting um, a for-profit uh camp to operate in perpetuity when it is expressly forbidden in the code. So where I'm having difficulty is I would very much like for the camp to continue. Um, I don't want to have them have to keep coming back before us every year, which I think is an undue burden to be placed on them. Um, but I also don't, I'm not comfortable with, um, you know, potentially tying the hands of a, our governing body in the future. Um, by having this granted as a for-profit institution, and I'm also concerned about um, setting the precedent that if our laws specifically state that it's only open for nonprofits, um, why are we giving it to them? Um, and if anybody else comes up before us the next time, I know each thing is done on an individual basis. But once that door is opened, I think it's going to be pretty hard to close. So I'm trying to, um, and, and I'd love uh, other board members' opinions. Um, how can we allow them to continue to operate, which I would like to do? Uh, I'd also like to grant the expansion to two hundred and twenty, but kind of reserve the right for whenever our government gets around to it. Um, to be able to enforce the nonprofit um, part of the law. And that's what I'm wrestling with. So I, I, if anybody else has, or shares my concerns or has some suggestions, I, I'd really like to hear them.
It's, it's.
Uh, Lynn, I've been wrestling with that a little bit too, and one of the thoughts I had is that maybe we could say, like, I, I don't, maybe we could say like five years, maybe that would give the governing body time to think about it and come up with something. I, I'm a little uncomfortable. And yet, I, it, it feels, it feels, in this case, it feels a little bit, well, we don't know why. We don't know why it was set up that way. This seems like a great facility. I don't see anything, I, I, I mean, even including that maybe oh eight five four oh really means Kingston sometimes. Um, that doesn't particularly bother me. Um, I, but I just, I wonder if that would be a way that we could, that would. I think coming back every year would be really kind of punitive. But I, something which wasn't in perpetuity might make us feel more comfortable and maybe five years would, that was what I came up with.
I have a question for Mr. Bridger and Mr. Lesko, and that is, how would that change in the ordinance, perhaps narrowly tailored to camps or in some way not carte blanche, fit into the general uh, review of zoning that I believe is ongoing?
Wouldn't that be more of a policy issue, George? I mean, a, a policy issue that would play out in a zoning requirement. I mean, it's whether, I don't think from a, it's, it's almost like a, um, it's a policy of the town not to allow for-profit camps. But it's not that decision on the part of the zoning board.
No, I, I, I agree with that. I'm just saying, it's my understanding the zoning regulations of Princeton in conformance with the new master plan are being reviewed. And so the question is, is how would this sort of change fit into that review? If you have any information on that?
Derek, if you don't mind, I'll take that. We're in the process of writing a request for a proposal for a consultant to review basically a co, a full uh zoning code rewrite. We know we have to harmonize and we know we have to modernize, so we're going to do both at once. It's going to take a while, but everything's going to be on the table. So I can't necessarily predict right now, you know, maybe the text stays exactly the same as it is. Maybe it, it changes completely, um, but everything will be on the table and, and we will be looking at uh, a lot of these codes that haven't been updated in a very long time.
Let me just, let me just ask a question here. Um, keep in mind that when you gave the temporary variance last year, the instruction was for the applicant to return to you now uh, and have the opportunity to ask for permanent variance. The resolution that was previously adopted reflects testimony from a PDS representative, I think it's Ms. Gibson, who explained that uh, PDS was happy that this variance would be to say, um, limited to the operations of this applicant. That if PDS decided they wanted to get a different for camp, for-profit camp operator, they would come back. Now, you've heard the testimony from the applicant. And I guess my question for you is keeping all this in mind. What would they come back to you with in five years? And what would they tell you in five years? That the, the traffic is still okay, or they still get positive reviews? Because I assume they would not continue to lease space with PDS if this, if the camp was not popular and if it was not, um, or put another way, and if there were issues with the operation, and I'm thinking primarily traffic or, you know, but some kind of a security problem. Um, they would be brought back to the board because they'd be violating the conditions of their approval. They testified a year ago, here, here's how it would operate. They've come back tonight to say, with the exception of being able to eventually expand the number of daily campers, they intend to comply with the operational system that they testified to. So I'm trying to figure out what would they come back to you within five? And, and if it was five years or three years or whatever, what, what would you be looking for them to say?
Yeah, I'm not as concerned about what they would be coming back for. They've done their part, they reached out to the mayor, they've done what they're supposed to do, they've met all of what we've requested. I would like to give the mayor's office or the township the opportunity um, of more time. I, I don't think that it's, I don't think it's anything that's on them. Um, there's a reason why the law says that it's meant to be nonprofit. I didn't write the law, I wasn't there in the, you know, sixties or seventies, wherever it was. Um, but there must have been some thinking about it, and moreover, they aren't, they're not allowed to do it anywhere else in, in, in the town. This gives a little bit of cover for the municipality to get to it. And if it doesn't get to it within a certain period of time, you know, it's kind of no harm, no foul for Stephen Case. They get a, the opportunity or the privilege or the ability to continue operating. Um, to grow, if we're able, if we all agree on the two hundred and twenty number, we're kind of giving them pretty much what they want, except for the ability to operate in perpetuity. And I'm not comfortable doing that because it's in, I mean, it's in clear violation of what the law says.
I think, can I comment now? I think, I think you're right. Um, I think we're, we're, since there's been, in a sense, no input from the governing body on this, when, when the applicant has reached out, the governing body basically said, we don't want to hear about it right now. And, but in the future, with the draft ordinance that's out there and the now consultant we're going to hire to review all this and make a decision. And it's been a number of years since the municipalities were merged. So it's going to be a while. I think Eve's suggestion of reviewing it, putting a time limit on it, I mean, obviously having them come in every year is, is a burden on the applicant. But on the other side of that, the comment that you made, Harland, is, is a, is a burden on the town. It could be a burden on the town if they want to make a decision. And uh, so I think, I think probably Eve's suggestion might be the way to do it. Put a time, you know, say, you know, we're going to give them, not in perpetuity, but we're going to give them five years. I don't think one year makes any sense. I think it's got to be more than one year, but, but at least this next five years could be decisive on fleshing out the zoning ordinance and the master plan and everything else. So there's, it could be a very decisive five years relative to this question.
Perhaps we should hear from the applicant.
Well, I, before you do that, I, I think we should hear if any, well, obviously I have, have some comments to make, I think any other board members do. Because this is, um, we're wrestling with this. Um, I I agree especially with Harlan on his first statement. Karen, I understand your point, and that got me thinking too, that it's sort of this blind alley that you know, I'll, I'll refer to it as that. And Steve, I understand your point too. Um, you know, we've got an additional testimony and the one that influences me the most now. I mean, all, all the testimony from the applicant was good. It, it, and in my, in my opinion, but we also have the Director of Planning who says there are other uses that have the nonprofit for-profit and it's townwide, and that gives me more pause than I had the main pause last year. Um, the town is going to work on the zoning. Um, yes, they're hiring the consultant, and we've been hearing that it, they have to merge it, they want to modernize it. I had heard, you know, timeframes of like two, not here, but other places like two years. Um, that it, it may take. So I'm considering all that, but, you know, my comments are what I heard from the Director of Planning and a little bit from the zoning officer actually escalated my concern from last year, that it's not appropriate to change the zoning with the, the use, you know, or grant the use with the zoning variance, which is a clearly stated use. And I was going to try to come up with reasons to vote for this, by the way.
Justin, may I ask you a question? In the event that this provision was considered and in the event that it is not changed, but that is one ordinance that is left alone. Um, because obviously if the town removes that restriction, profit versus nonprofit, then then the applicant and other camps would, would have no issue, I assume, with that. Um, but whatever the town ends up doing, that, that does not, that does not prevent the town from applying that to other camps. The only camp, I mean, if you, if you say, oh, it all got changed and Stephen Kate's camp still doesn't comply, well, we're only talking about one camp. We're not talking about all future, um, for-profit camps that may want to rent space from other private schools in Princeton. So am I wrong about that? Because the concern is that somehow we're closing the door for the town to effectuate zoning changes.
Can I ask?
And you could always argue that with any use variance. You could always say, well, we gave you a use variance, but now look what happened. The town changed things. So maybe we shouldn't have, we shouldn't have given you that use variance, but you did. You weighed all the factors and you approved the use variance. Um, so I'd appreciate your input on that.
I, I, can I ask one question first? Well, maybe two questions. One, Michael, the concern you have.
Steve, I would, I prefer that you let Justin answer Karen's question, which preceded you.
Okay, no problem. No, I think what I heard was more so the opposite, that there was a concern that this approval would be given that allows this camp to operate in perpetuity or any camp after within the same parameters, and the town continues to not allow nonprofit camps, you know, so now this one school, one company have something that the policy dictates, you know, we don't want as a community, or we're not changing as a community, or we're keeping as it's been. Uh, so I don't know if I answered your question or if I flipped it, but I, I, I think that's what I'm hearing more of because you're correct in that if there was a change and we said, any school can now have a for-profit camp, any church, any, whatever it might be, then Any school can now have a for-profit camp, any church, any, whatever it might be, then. You know, Stephen Kate's still would have what they received tonight, those parameters, or kinda. The better of whatever comes. Maybe it's that there's no limit on students, or there's no limit on. Time or months or, or anything like that. I mean, I think they will get the benefit of the two.
I know.
Well, all right, Justin, just one more question for you. So for example, if. The zoning board granted a use variance for a funeral home. And let's say it's on the edge of the residential district. No one objects. All right, well, that could continue in perpetuity. Because it runs with the land. So. I'm, I guess what I'm asking all of you is to consider what is different. About this situation. And I, I understand the concern is that there is some distinction being made between a profit and a nonprofit camp. You've given this camp approval based on a number of issues you looked at. How they operate, what is their program, uh, what do they offer? You've heard testimony from PDS school, so you're approving it on a specific set of facts. No, so I, I guess what you're hearing me say is my concern that. You're limiting it to five years and then after five years, assuming Stephen Kate's still leases space from PDS. Would you tell them another five years after? Let's just say this ordinance stays the way it is. It's not changed. It's not revised. There are many things for. These consultants to look at, and, and let's say this one is not high on the priority list. So. It, it remains the way it is. Um, after five years, would you tell them another five years?
Wait a minute. Why don't we just take it and why don't we live in the present right now? Because there are a lot of different periods, five years from now or a year from now.
You, we're, we're, they're asking for a specific use in perpetuity. We're, we're. We have two criteria here. One is, do we give them that? The other is, is does that limit? The ability of the town to make changes in their requirements since. No one seems to understand why or can explain why. There's a differentiation between for-profit and nonprofit when it comes to this. And, and then we have, on the other hand, we have the applicant coming back. Next year or the year, I mean, continually coming back on a yearly basis, trying to get this re-approved. So we're in a sense trying to do the applicant a favor and give him. And, and I'm not so sure doing it in perpetuity makes sense, but I, that's why I go back to what Eve said. Let's put a time limit on it. And let's, maybe the municipality doesn't have time to deal with it this year or next year, but within the next few years, they might.
I agree with all of you so far. I, but I think we ought to just approve it because. They've satisfied all the criteria for why they're asking for variances in the first place. That they're adding a needed and well-run program to the community. We don't know why the community ever said that you can't have not-for-profit or for-profit. I mean. Now, we have to understand that a not-for-profit status is only a tax status. It has nothing to do with whether they're making money or not. No such thing of a. My boss used to say, we may be not-for-profit, but not for loss either. I mean, the PDS is doing this because they, they need a little extra money in this time. This school's willing to provide a little extra money and a terrific service. And I don't, you know, in, you know, I don't think we're setting a precedent. We're doing. Even this one question.
Well, we, yeah, we, we, in a sense, are setting a precedence. You know, precedent, because it's, it's, it's specifically excluded. And if somebody's, maybe, I don't think anybody's, and it's not, it's not our responsibility to do this, and I think. The applicants contacting the municipality to try to get a. To try to get some sort of clarification on what's going on. There's gotta be, there's gotta be some basis for this decision to have been made. And, and, and in a sense, Harland's right. I mean, not in a sense, Harland's right. I mean, you know, we're granting this. Based on what we're assuming somebody did at some point. Nobody knows.
Karen's right too, that we do a lot of different things other than anything else.
I, I didn't catch that.
Well, I think Karen was right too. We don't go back on other things that we've done and say, you know. Rejustify yourself.
But we, well, we'll tie a, a variance to a specific use. Or piece of land or an applicant. I mean, we put some criteria on it, which creates a way out for the town.
So why don't, why don't we give them seven years?
I don't, look, I mean, I have no idea whether two or three or five or seven makes any difference. You know, I just think that if this is, if, if the, and, and. Justin, you can, you know, speak to this, that, that, you know, the, the. Town is reexamining the ordinances, they're hiring consultant and the master plan is floating out there. So I go back to what I said, in the next few years, there's gonna be a lot of discussion of various aspects, aspect. Aspects late of the ordinance, um, and this might be one of them, might not be, but it might be. And this way it gives the municipality some ability to, to create something that's thought out. Or that somebody understands, because obviously we can't find out why, why it's, uh, why a for-profit is excluded.
Chair, can I weigh in with a couple of thoughts if, if I may?
Wait, just hang, hang on one second. Yes, you can, but just hang on. Um. Michael, Eve, does that make any sense to you?
Um, basically, uh, no.
Okay.
And, but, you know, I look forward to hearing from any other board members who haven't spoken. I mean, I think we clearly have people, um. You know, where you're leaning or where someone else is leaning, but some people are quiet, or we can just go to a vote. After the applicant asks the questions they want to ask. But. You know. Want to let the applicant us speak now or?
Well, yeah.
Or other board members?
Well, let's try the board members first, and then we'll go to the applicant. Okay, let's have the attorney.
I will just weigh in and say I'm still in favor of my suggestion.
Okay. That's good. All right.
Me too.
Would be willing to make a motion at some point.
Okay, and I'd be willing to second it at some point.
Yeah. All right, let's let the, let's let the applicant's attorney speak.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I think this is a very healthy and lively debate about. Unlike what Ms. Casey said with the funeral home, you know, being approved for, you know, at the edge of a residential uh neighborhood. I think we could put our fingers on, you know, why that's a prohibited use in, in a residential zone. And I think if the board chooses to grant it, it's because of the set of circumstances. I think here we're stuck with a situation. Nobody knows, and we've said this throughout this meeting and last year, nobody, the mayor, the government, nobody has any real. Knowledge as to why this is written the way it's written. So I want to just float a couple of things. One is that, you know, as Ms. Casey did say, typically a use variance when it's granted. That it isn't looked back upon. It's, it's, we've weighed the facts, we've made it case-specific, operation-specific, and we grant it. So in that sense, I don't know how that's different here, but on the flip side. By taking Ms. Coulson's suggestion of doing this, you know, whether it's five years, seven years, whatever it is. While it's atypical, I think it accomplishes two things. I think it will force. Force the governing body to take a look at this, because in my understanding, you as a zoning board issue a report. Um, at the end of every calendar year, I think, I think that's a statewide thing that's done. Where you issue a report to the governing body saying, here are the variances we approved this past year, um, and then they. They, they're kind of forced to take a look at that. The other thing that may, it may accomplish. Whether i- is, is shedding some light on to why this is a specific zoning requirement. If they conclusively, if you're going through an ordinance change right now, and they conclusively. Do not make any change, and they state why they don't make a change to this for-profit issue. And they say, no, we really don't want this to be a for-profit um, location. Then you have your answer. In five years from now, we have our work cut out for us to justify, but at least we have an understanding from the governing body. What their thought process is. And if they conclusively look at it and say, you know what, none of us can understand why this be, this came into effect. And they remove it altogether from the ordinance, then we have our answer in that direction. So. I'm not opposed to Ms. Coulson's suggestion, because it does put. It puts pressure, knowing that the governing body is going through an ordinance change or an overhaul anyways. It does put pressure on them to look at this issue. So, you know, Mr. Floyd, I, I hear your point. My initial point was, you know, stands, which is. This is the zoning board granting any use, any D one use variance that comes before you. Specifically not permitted in the ordinance. So in that sense, this is no different. But where it does differ, and where I think this board has a chance to get it right, by putting on a timeframe on it. That hopefully not making us come back every year, but by putting a timeframe. It does allow the governing body to examine this particular issue and make a decision on it. One way or another, whether we don't want for-profits because, well, now we've got a ti- a deadline on our approval. That we have to come back and justify, or they look at it and say. This provision no longer makes any sense if it's from the sixties or seventies, and they eliminate it and we don't have to come back. But I think that's a unique condition that can be placed here that would allow, hopefully it addresses. Everybody who's on the fence here tonight. I think it allows the board to have the cover of. Granting a, a use variance for something that has proven that it works. While also not doing it in perpetuity, and further also a little bit putting this, putting. Pressure on the governing body to look at this issue during its, its present overhaul. So that's all I wanted to add.
All right, board, any other board members want to make a comment?
Yeah, um.
Ree, Coulson, and I think five years is reasonable and I. I like the fact that it's working so well. Wouldn't like to see it turned away, shut down. But I do think we need, try to get a ruling or a change. Some resolution from the, uh, the governing body.
Okay, Michael, did you want to say something?
Uh, let, Donna want to speak?
Oh, thank you, Michael. Um, you know, I, I, I'm always hesitant to, um. Or, or don't like granting use experiences where it's not allowed in any zone. Um, but in this case, um, I see. All the positive criteria and special reasons, and I don't really see any detriment. And I think that, um, Eve's suggestion is a really good one in that it. Gives us, it gives the camp clearance to go ahead with something that I think we all agree is a worthwhile endeavor. Um, but it also lets the board still retain some control over. What is going on with the use that's technically not allowed anywhere. So I think it's a, it's the best of both. Um, it's a good compromise.
I guess, um. If I would do that, I would prefer, I'm, I'm not on the seven year. I'm more on the three year. And. Hopefully the town gets to it, and if, if they don't, then they gotta come back.
So Michael, are you willing to say that if we give them three years? I'm happy with giving them three years, but if nothing happens between now and three years, that they don't have to come back and give a full-blown. Rejustification for it.
Well, yeah, you know, there'll be different board members or whatever, but, you know, if everything stayed the same. It would get repeated again.
Yeah.
But.
I'm good with that.
How about four?
I think, I, again, just weighing in and. We'll, we'll, we'll take, you know, what the board's comfortable with, but I think knowing that there's a whole overhaul of the ordinance, I, I think there's a. A lower limit of what's reasonable as well. I, I think like if we said two years, maybe even three, I don't know. If the municipality is gonna turn around the full ordinance overhaul by then, so. My only request would be just something meaningful that gives them an opportunity to look at it, so that when we come back, there's. It's either still in effect and we know why, and we have to put on full proofs again, but with an understanding. Or it's not in effect and we don't have to come back. I, I just, I think it should be a sensible amount of time where they have the full opportunity to make those changes. That's all.
So why don't we do a compromise where we say five years, um, unless the, um. The laws have been amended prior to that timeframe, and then everybody's happy.
I think so.
I would that work?
Well, I mean, if, if the, um. If the consultant comes back and in two years' time, new rules have been, um, promulgated. Then we abide by those new rules. If the consultant comes and it takes seven years. Um, to get that, then you're covered for the five.
I, I think that would be hard though, because what if they, there's, what if somehow. It gets sped up and it's, and it's decided like next December. I mean, that would be a really hard way to do business, I think.
Okay, but I mean, Eve, you've lived here, I think even longer than I have. Nothing has ever moved that quickly in Princeton, so that's just. I, 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 uh, I, I envy your optimism on that one. I just don't.
No, I, I not, don't mean it that way. I just feel like it would be kind of a sort of Damocles. Getting, it's getting late. I'm coming up with odd metaphors, but, um.
Yeah, I'm also concerned that, that putting a, if the ordinance is changed, then it comes down to. Changed how? If it's changed to, you know, allow a two-family residence in a one-family zone, is that considered? You know what I'm saying, Mr. Tenenbaum? It's not.
But, but we're, we're only specifically talking about the nonprofit and the.
I, I, right, I understand.
And basically, if we're, look, hopefully the ordinance will change in, in your, your client's favor.
Agreed.
And say it doesn't matter whether it's for-profit, in which case, okay, then, then, you know, you guys keep operating. If however, it says we're insisting that it be nonprofit, um, that's going to require some dancing. Um, so, you know, it's, um, look, I'm, I'm happy to do the five year if that's what everybody says, or if everybody's comfortable with. I'm, I don't want you to have to come back every year. It doesn't make any sense. Um, if board members are concerned that five years is. Too long and they want to, you know, give the opportunity for the, um, for the new zone, new zoning rules to come into play, maybe that's the compromise. But I, I too am hitting a, an eleven forty mark.
I was gonna say, in twenty minutes, you're gonna have to wish me a happy birthday, so.
Uh, there you go. I'd love to get you a present.
I move we accept this proposal with a five-year review period.
I'll second that.
Okay, just, just for my clarification, because I'm preparing the resolution. So the board is going to continue this variance. For five years. And prior to the expiration of the five years, which I guess we would measure from. Uh, when the resolution is approved and it's data publication. Um, the applicant will need to return. To review the status, I guess, of the applicable zoning ordinances. And to again seek. A permanent variance if, if they still want to do that in five years.
Whether it's a permanent variance or whatever, they have to come back to us five years.
Right.
Mr. Wine, is this acceptable to the applicant? I just want to. Mr. Wine, is this acceptable to the applicant? I just want to confirm this, because as you've noticed, it, this is atypical, so. I want to understand that the applicant. Is fine with this.
Yes, yes, they are, they are fine with this.
Okay.
And, yeah.
All right, so we have, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we want to have any more discussion on this? Before we bring it to a vote. Donna, Michael.
Let's vote.
Okay, all right, we have a motion, we have a second, Karen, you understand?
I do, I do.
Claudia, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
No.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Eight, five years.
Happy birthday.
And happy birthday, Eric.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Michael, incidentally, the only reason I went back to five years is because.
I don't really care. Don't tell me, you don't have to justify, I respect your opinion.
I'm not justifying, I'm just saying, we're already started in year one, and so they have to come back almost, you know.
Okay, well, that's, 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 I think that's faulty logic.
You think almost everything I think is faulty.
You, you don't. You make a lot of motions and you don't know how to make a motion.
That a fact.
I am delighted to be joined today by a very special guest, it is Mark.